The council will come back to order. This is a reconvening of the meeting, reconvening, I'm sorry, of the meeting that was recessed on Friday, December 13th in 2024. We will continue where we left off at the meeting, but before... Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The quorum is now open. The quorum is now open. Please use your e-device. The quorum is now open. Please raise your hand if you need support with your e-device. I will now call for a vote for those who have not used the e-device. Alderman Hopkins, not in chambers. Alderman Robinson, not in chamber... Oh, Alderman Robinson is here, sorry. Alderman Robinson is present. Alderwoman Coleman, not in chambers. Alderwoman Taylor, not in chambers. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, not in chambers. Alderman Vasquez, not in chambers. Alderman Napolitano. Oh, I got you. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley is present. Alderperson or Alderwoman Anna Hoppenworth is not in chambers. Your mayor, we have a quorum.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. There are 44 members present, so we do have a quorum. There are a number of alders who have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59. Those alders are as following: Alders Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez, Alder Brian Hopkins, Alder Jeanette Taylor, Alder Andre Vasquez, Alder Lenny Manah Hoppenworth, Alder Marie Hatton. Can I get a motion to approve their participation? Have them added to the roll once they're... Once they have been verified to be online? Is there a motion? It's been moved? All right, it's been moved? But there is a motion to lay the motion to allow for remote participation? There's a motion to lay the motion of Rule 59 on the table?
We have Lenny Hoppenworth, opposite.
So the motion...
Oh, Hatton.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
I'm sorry?
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to clarify that Alderwoman Hatton, who's marked as present, is not here at the moment.
We're fixing it. We're fixing it.
Very well, the clerk is fixing it.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman.
So there are 43 members present, and the motion to lay the motion to allow alders to participate remotely, that motion has been... There's a motion to lay that motion on the table. So if you vote yes, this would essentially mean that these alders will not be able to be allowed to participate in today's meeting remotely. If you vote no, it means you wish to return back to the initial motion to allow for remote participation per Rule 59. Okay, all those in favor to lay... All right, there is a roll call to lay the motion for Rule 59 on the table. Madam Clerk, please make the e-vote application available to the alders. Again, the motion to lay Rule 59 on the table would mean that you do not wish to proceed to allow members of this body to participate remotely. A no vote means you wish to return back to the initial motion to allow for remote participation.
It is now open. The motion on the table... Hold on one second.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would request that we do the roll call by a voice vote.
We're working on the e-application now. The clerk is working on it now. Thank you, Alderman Lopez. We're going to provide the clerk just another moment to see if we can get the technology moving. In the event that technology is not able to accommodate us, it would require a member of this body to withdraw the e-vote application component, not even withdraw, but just allow for an old-school roll call vote. All right, just give her another minute, please. So thank you for your patience. We're inevitably going to need this technology, and so we're resetting it now. Just provide just another moment.
Okay, now it's back on. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. And again, just for clarity, a yes vote to lay the motion on the table means that you do not wish to allow for members of this body to participate remotely. A no vote means you wish to return back to the initial motion to allow for remote participation.
No, she does look. She's out. Okay. Okay, I will now call on those who have not used the e-device. Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall is a no. Alderman Mitchell, not present. Alderman O'Shea. Okay? Alderman O'Shea already went through. He said no. Alderman Vegas is already in. Alderman Spisato. Alderman Spisato. Oh, I see yours in. Alderwoman Silverstein. Silverstein is a no. Alderwoman Coleman has just walked in. I see you. Yeah, Alderwoman Coleman's here now. Did you want to vote? Nay, no? Sorry, Alderman, I couldn't hear you. No, okay. Alderwoman Coleman is a no. Everyone voted who wished? Okay, the voting is now closed.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. There are 32 nays, 10 yays. The motion to lay the Rule 59 motion on the table has failed. Alderwoman Harris on a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
All those in favor of reconsidering this motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. Back to the original motion, there are a number of alders that have requested to participate remotely per Rule 59. The alders are as following: Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez, Brian Hopkins, Jeanette Taylor, Andre Vasquez, Lenny Manah Hoppenworth, Marie Hatton. Madam Clerk, could you verify their presence before we make the official motion?
Yes. Alderman Hopkins, are you there?
Present.
Hopkins is present. Alderwoman Taylor, are you there?
I'm here.
Taylor is present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, are you there?
Here.
Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Vasquez.
Present.
Vasquez is present. Alderwoman Manah Hoppenworth.
Present.
Manah Hoppenworth is present. Alderwoman Hatton.
Present.
Hatton is present.
Very, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to approve? It's been moved. All those in favor of this motion to allow for remote participation for the following alders signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please add those members to the roll call.
They will be added.
Very well. This is a portion of the meeting for public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker this afternoon is Carol Reyes.
My name is Carol Reyes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please, continue.
A Chicago resident, Puerto Rican descent, I raise my voice against you, Mayor Johnson. Of the estimated 10 to 15 million percentage of arrivals that you welcomed, you stated that they would continue to make our city safe. Safe for whom? You welcome the most violent gang on the face of the planet, people who are persona non grata from all over the world, explosive experts, serial rapists, human traffickers, drug dealers, terrorists, and thieves, and you want the residents of Chicago to pay for them to be here? A Department of Homeland Security employee stated that these migrants received a one-time payment of $6,000 upon arrival and $3,000 per family per month. They also get free phones and service, free Uber and bus rides, and free airline tickets, food stamps, apartment vouchers for $1,500 per month, and free medical care, benefits Chicagoans or even citizens have never received. Have you lost your mind? They never paid one cent into our system. You kicked out residents from their shelters to house the aforementioned people. You spent over $400 million on them and audaciously requested a property tax increase of $300 million. $68 million was approved according to WBEZ. Ask George Soros for the $300 million. He's good at funding special interest groups. Ask Kim Fox and Lori Lightfoot. Bad police officers cost Chicago residents tens of millions of dollars yearly in civil lawsuits. They commit crimes with zero accountability, remain on their jobs, get promotions, and retire with full pension packages. You put the future and lives of at-risk youth in jeopardy by slating community centers and schools so desperately needed in the black communities for migrant shelters. You put the illegals over the homeless, jobless, youth, and veterans. Companies and Catholic churches displayed huge banners in Spanish offering employment to migrants, jobs that were never offered to your constituents. You were elected to be the voice of, to act in the best interest of, the residents of this city. I pray Trump audits where that money went. You have degrees in youth development and teaching. You should have stayed in your lane. Clearly, you cannot budget at this level. Be a man of your word. You promised not to raise property taxes and to get rid of the red light cameras and not to increase them. Scrap your migrants' first agenda and get these migrants out of here. They are a millstone around your neck. God will not be mocked. Borders are biblical. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Mona M.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please, commence.
Thank you for the time to speak. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I've had this honor several times in the past and would like to specifically address the 34th ward. As a reminder, I am not here to protest anyone's religion, Scientology, but am here to warn you about the abuses happening behind the cloak of the religion. P. Diddy, Epstein, and Nassar are all examples of warnings that came to councils such as yourself, and nothing happened before the abuses went out of control. Physical, mental, and sexual abuses happen behind closed doors and are being swept under a PR rug as window decorations presented by their front groups. Many organizations operate in your community under the guise of humanitarian or educational causes, but some, like these, have hidden agendas. The Way to Happiness, Wise, Volunteer Ministers, Dionetics, Youth for Human Rights, Citizens' Commission on Human Rights, Foundation for a Drug-Free World, Applied Scholastic, Narcanon, Criminon, and ABLE. These are all front groups that are window dressing to disguise the horrors of what is really happening, and also front groups that are recruitment pools to bring more victims into their web of deceit. There's a targeted class of people right now, the immigrant population, that are ripe for the pickings to promise them a pathway to citizenship, but when they are on the payroll, the person's documents are confiscated and held for safekeeping. This leaves them less than a slave and a victim as trapped humans trapped in a perpetual servitude behind the guise of an R1 visa. This is happening right under your nose, and it needs to be dealt with. When you are asked to be a part of or speak at any of these events associated with Scientology or their front groups, know that you are silently endorsing the elder abuse, silently endorsing slavery, silently endorsing child abuse and human trafficking. When you go to their galas to help raise money for CPD or Choice for Tots, yep, it appears they are being benevolent, but in reality, it is, what I said, a window dressing. To conclude, this is a quote from their doctrine, and I quote, "A seven-year-old girl who shudders because a man kisses her is not computing. She is reacting to engram, since at seven she should see nothing wrong in a kiss, not even a passionate one." This is a doctrinal quote. Are you okay with being aligned with this? I yield back my time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Lori Brogan.
Thank you. Yes, this is Lori Brogan, and I'm calling on behalf of a citizen, concerned citizen here in Illinois. I'm a parent of three. I'm speaking as an individual. I want to bring your attention to something. I firmly believe in bridging our viewpoints through communication and dialogue, and I think that can only happen when you have the facts and have facts straight. I would like to talk about what I have recently learned about in our Prince Road District, and the students of Columbia College have written about recently, and basically, some of the things that they have had to deal with. And this is regarding the occupation of what they call themselves as the Church of Scientology Chicago. I want to address specifically, I'll go briefly here, you may not know how they operate, meaning that they firmly believe... They show a movie called Dionetics to the students, and in this movie, they talk about them having a solution for a modern treatment of mental health. All you have to do is flip this up to see numerous deaths that have been caused, but I don't want to digress, because they say that this is spiritual counseling is what they offer instead of clinical, mental health, pharmaceutical, and mental health is such a huge issue, not in our city but all over. And what they do, what they call spiritual counseling, but what they call spiritual counseling is called auditing. You may not be familiar with auditing, and I don't want to go through exactly all the things that are auditing, but I do want to tell you that auditing is something that is done to children and with children. It is a form of what we might call dialogue, but it's not. It's not a form of... It's not a form of penance either. It's a form of confessional. It's a form of interrogation, and often these are explicit sexual content where children have to say words that are explicitly sexual, that I could never say here. And we need to be aware of this. We need to be informed. Again, it is important to have bridging viewpoints, but we can only know the truth in what is being communicated. So bridging viewpoints, first of all, what we need to do is we have to have an ethical guidelines and legal procedures in place in order to prevent the use of inappropriate auditing and questioning techniques on children. The ethical principles should be as follows. Children must be treated as minors, and they must have a limited capacity. They are not to be seen as adults. Developmental stage and their vulnerability must be respected. Questioning and auditing of children should be done in age-appropriate manner, avoiding any adult language and topics that are beyond their understanding. There should be strict prohibition against using auditing or questioning techniques to elicit sexual or explicit information from children with consequences.
Thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker this afternoon is Jessica Jackson.
So it has already been determined that you don't follow the United States Constitution, and maybe that's perhaps because you're not a founding father and your name is not on the document. So perhaps if we show you something that your name is on, maybe you'll follow those rules. We got a Rules of Order and Procedure, City Council, City of Chicago, for 2023 to 2027 with your name on it. However, we sit in here all the time and watch you violate our rights. We sit in here all the time and watch you allow city council to violate our rights. Now, we're going to talk about this budget, about the strange things that's happening, because again, your name was on this executive order of May 2023, this executive order for immigration, migrants, and refugee rights. You caused all this money to go to illegal immigrants, not Harold Washington. You going to be held accountable for it, and we want a forensic audit of the money that was spent on illegal immigration. You all are trying to do everything but that, when in fact, that's where all the money went. So anything that you all pass is not genuine. It's not honest, because you're trying to cover up where our money actually went. Now, it's been some strange voting going on. Let's talk about the fact that Tyler Farrow and Lopez, Setyo Lopez, got extra money. Could it be because Byron Setyo Lopez wrote a letter on my behalf to help with my case, and so did Tyler Farrow? Could it be that they were told that they could get more votes if they blew my case? Now, let's look at Alderman David Moore, who have been in here and listened to me talk about my probate all the time and haven't done anything. Could it be he planning a seminar with Lori and them while at the same time selling me out, because he's supposed to be getting a fieldhouse for his ward? We got something for you. Fridays. Fridays, Famous Friday, and we got another one. This is Chicago Flip Red. Chicago Red got you too. You got Chicago Red, and you got Chicago Flip Red, and both of us getting that. So now, who's going to be Famous Friday? Put his name real fast. Carlos Ramirez Rosa. Yeah!
Thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Sharon Abbott.
Brandon Johnson, first of all, I hate to break your heart. I didn't vote for you. I'm a lifelong conservative. Nevertheless, your job is to represent all of the people of Chicago and not your own personal interests. On May 15, 2020, you took your oath of office and solemnly swore to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you would faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor to the vest of your ability. The U.S. Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, states that the United States shall guarantee to every state in the union a republican form of government and shall protect each of these against invasion. The preamble of the U.S. Constitution states that we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, and provide for the common defense... provide for the common defense. Likewise, the Illinois Constitution reiterates that the people formed our government with its primary role being to ensure domestic tranquility and provide for the common defense. Brandon Johnson, you violated your oath of office. You have not supported the U.S. Constitution nor the Illinois Constitution. You have not protected the people of Chicago from invasion nor ensure domestic tranquility. You have also ignored the Declaration of Independence, which declares that governments derive their just powers from the consent of the governed. No one appointed a monarch to rule over the people of Chicago. Rather, as mayor, your duty is to serve the public, and you are bound by the parameters of the Constitution only to act by the consent of the people. Members of city council, you likewise took an oath of office to support the U.S. and Illinois Constitution. You are also bound by the parameters of the Constitution only to act by the consent of the people.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is David Mason.
We have to remember history, because the number one thing that we know for certain is that history always repeats itself. So, Mr. Johnson, I know that you can appreciate when me giving you a history lesson with you being a former social studies teacher from Elgin. Well, you plan on going back to the classroom anyway. That was the whole purpose of what you taking a leave of absence, right? Well, besides the mental reason, I'm sorry, I wasn't supposed to say that out loud, but let's go ahead and talk about history repeating itself. Let's talk about taxation. Chicago has a tax for everything: water tax, grocery tax, tourist tax, hotel tax, bag tax, liquor tax, cigarette tax, the highest sales tax in the country by far, parking tax, surcharge of downtown parking, property lease tax, and street tax. The only thing that you all don't have a tax for yet is oxygen tax. And the only reason why you don't have a tax for that just yet is because you ain't figured out how to do it yet. But let me not speak too soon, because you probably might actually think it's a good idea, and you're going to try to write it down. So let's go ahead and talk about, let's not forget about the good old sugar tax. Y'all remember y'all used to back in 2016, and you go to your favorite grocery store, and you buy your favorite 24-pack of pop? Well, you paying more taxes on that pop than what the actual cost of it is. What you didn't know is that your buddy Brandon Johnson voted for that sugar tax. So it's not a surprise that he wants to pour a $40 million line of credit and put the city in even more debt than what we already owe with the $1.2 billion deficit. But it's your fault that because you gave half the money to illegals. Also, it's lazy government is what you call it, so let's not forget that we got to watch these policy tricks. And I was at that borders meeting, and Tom Homan said out of his mouth that it is illegal to harbor and conceal illegal aliens. So like I told you before, that you ain't going to blink when we ain't going to flip either. Now, I'm going to tell you another thing. All you illegals, you ain't going to have no Merry Christmas. You going to have a Merry Deportation Christmas.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Robert Thierry.
Hello. Thank, hello, thank you for letting me have this opportunity to speak. My name is Robert Thierry. In 2017, I became homeless and disabled, but this year, there's an October 7 attack on two of Chicago's homeless people. Mr. Paul Williams and David Swick were both executed for being homeless, and David Swick was also disabled. I was protesting because homeless lives matter. On November 14, I was attacked by the owner of the J.J. Fish. I have video footage on my cell phone. I did not fight back. They made a false report of me saying that I assaulted them. I was told I could not press charges because I was the assailant on the false report. So November 21, I went to headquarters at a town hall meeting, and the next day, November 22, a detective was assigned. I kept calling him. I didn't get through to him till November 26. I requested him to look at the video footage at Nicky's across the street from 7828, actually 7829 is Nicky's address. He said he, okay, he would get back to me on Saturday. I didn't get back to him. I had to call him on December 2, and I sent him my video on my cell phone. And again, I requested him to look at the video footage at the Nicky's, but instead, he went to J.J. Fish and called me on December 6. He called me, he told me to go talk to the owner of Nicky's, that the owner wants to make amends with me. And I told him, no, I wasn't going to do that. He then said, if you don't drop the charges against him, then I will arrest you for harassing him, harassing the owner of J.J. Fish. I said, no, I want to press charges, and I want to go, go order protection on him. He hung up the phone on me. J.J. Fish shows a history of total disregard for human life and violence against disabled, a disabled citizen of Chicago. Please look into this matter and shut down J.J. Fish at 7828 South Western Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is the Chicago Conservative.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
You spent over $574 million on illegal immigrants here in Chicago, Illinois since 2022. Now, you still feel like you have to harbor these illegals, which is not a good idea, and in my personal opinion, I don't think it's a good idea to challenge Tom Homan on this, because he's trying to clean up our cities, Mr. Brandon Johnson. Now, let me just remind everybody here that Brandon Johnson is terrible with the budget. How is this $40 million credit line is going to work exactly? Because the key word is credit. So how much will we be using from this $40 million? And the real question is, how much will we be paying back? Now, you want to sit here, you and JB Prisker want to puff out your chest and fight Tom Homan. We need Tom Homan here in Chicago. We need Donald Trump, and I don't want to see people like Pam Bundy and Cash Patel, you know, haul you up out of here and become prosecutor. I don't want to see that happen, but they will do their job if they have to, Brandon Johnson. Now, we are $1 billion in debt. That's absolutely insane. Kamala Harris, she spent $1 billion on her campaign less than a year, and she's $20 million in debt. So it's looking like Democrats are bad with money. Now, you ignored me for 10 to 15 seconds last time I was speaking, and I really did not appreciate that at all, but I got a Christmas present for you. Let's remind the people of Chicago that Brandon Johnson spent $32,000 in campaign funds on haircuts and makeup. So I got an early Christmas present for you, Brandon Johnson. This is some makeup for you right here. You got some rouge, you got the makeup brush right there, so you can save this people some money for Pride Out Loud. Now, let me tell you people, I'm going to be serious here. We need to start voting different in these cities like New York and Chicago. Stop voting these people in. It's not Democrat versus Republican anymore. It is populace versus establishment. It is the populace versus the establishment. Stop letting them trick you into the race baiting when it comes to Brandon Johnson. Oh, black people need help too. Trump want to, he want to, you know, hurt black people. What are you talking about? We're legal here. We are legal. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm trying to be nice about this, and Mr. Brandon Johnson, I do respect you in a little bit way, because you're trying the best that you can. I really want to believe that, but listen, man, you got a 14% approval rating, so the people is looking like they're telling you that you're fired, man. So I'm just humbly asking you, Brandon Johnson, to please come up with something that's reasonable by the end of this year, because I don't want to see a government shutdown, Mr. Brandon Johnson. Please do your job. I don't care if you're black. Chicago needs to get rid of DEI. I don't care if you're black. Can you do the job? Can you do the job, Mr. Brandon Johnson? And it's looking like you can't do the job. So please don't fail us.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have time to sign up for the public comment period.
Farewell. Thank you. Okay. Sergeant at Arms, please restore order. Sergeant at Arms, please remove these individuals from the chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you. This chamber will come back to order. Thank you very much. Members of the public, please, members of the public, if you wish to stay in the chambers, please sit down and return the order. Members of the public, if you wish to remain in the chambers. Thank you very much. Though there are... If those in the audience, if you cannot restrain yourself, I would respectfully ask that the Sergeant at Arms remove you. There are no resolutions for today, however. The 15th Ward Former Alder Person, 1986 elected, former alder, Marlene Carter, who has passed away, I would ask that this body take a moment of silence in her honor. Communications, Madam Clerk.
Communications, Honored the Mayor to the Honorable the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management and Transfer here with an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 1751 North Harlem Avenue, favorable consideration of this ordinance to be appreciated, barely two years, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Tyler C. Hall as member of the Police Board for a term effective immediately expiring August 10, 2029, to succeed Nanette L. Dorley, whose term has expired. Viable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated, barely two years, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Police and Fire. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council of the following documents filed in my office: estimated year 2025 aggregate property tax levy as amended; I, City Clerk Valencia, transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications reports requiring City Council action; zoning regulations or particular areas referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks Building Standards; claims against City of Chicago, which refer to the Committee on Finance. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the Mayor and other city officers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dell.
Mr. President, I was asked to be recognized at the agreed calendar, but I can do my recognition here for the life of Bob Love, who passed away.
Oh, very well. Thank you, Madam Chair. My apologies. Chair recognizes Ald... We can do it during the agreed, so let's continue with your committee report. Thank you again. Thank you, Madam Chair. You're recognized.
With my resolution?
With your committee reports.
With my committee report?
We will do the agreed, we will do that after the committee report.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on December 12, 2024, the following items received a due pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is a substitute ordinance establishing Casa Yucatan 4% LP as the developer and issuing multifamily program funds and other financial assistance to Casa Yucatan 4% LP for the 4% project at 1609 West 21st Street in the 25th Ward. Mr. President, unless there's someone who wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Very well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you please offer the E application for the Alders to cast her vote for the first item?
All right, the voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please...
Thank you, please, Mr. Order. Thank you, Mr. Sergeant at Arms. This, this chamber will come back to order. I would ask that the members of the public to stop shouting and to have a seat. This meeting will stand in recess. I would ask that the Sergeant... I would ask that the Sergeant at Arms clear every member of the public. I want to ask the S... You got it? This body will stand in recess as the Sergeant at Arms restores order. Can I have your attention, please? Ladies and gentlemen, please go to your closest exit. Follow the directions of the officers. Please direct the people to the exit. Please move to the exit. Ladies and gentlemen, please move to the exit. Ladies and gentlemen, please move to the closest exit. Please move to the exit. Please move to the exit. Ladies and gentlemen, please continue to move to the exit. Please follow the directions of the officers. Please move to the exits, thank you. Please continue to move to the exit, thank you. Please continue to move to the exit, thank you. Can I have your attention, please? Everybody listen up! You have to go down to the first floor.
No!
You have to go down to the first floor.
No!
This meeting will come back to order. This meeting will come back to order. Madam Chair, could you just restate your motion? The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow, please restate your motion, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Unless someone wants, wish... Unless someone wishes to speak to this item, I renew my motion for passage of this item, the first item on the Finance Committee agenda by a roll call.
Very well, thank you, Madam Chair, members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
It's going to come back up. Refresh your devices, please, please refresh your devices and a new vote will pop up. Give one second, it's opening. Okay, refresh your devices and it is now back open. Raise your hand if you need help. Refresh your device. Hit Refresh Your Device, if you need help, raise your hand. Thank you. Alderman Hopkins. I will now call for those who have not voted yet using their e-device. Alderman Hopkins.
Alderman Hopkins votes aye.
Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Mosley. Mosley is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Vasquez is a yes. Alderwoman Manahappenworth.
Yes.
Manahappenworth is a yes. Alderwoman Haddon. Alderwoman Haddon.
Yes, but I already marked it.
Haddon is a yes. The voting is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, there are 50 yays, zero nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of reconsidering this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails, the Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is a substitute ordinance establishing Casa Yucatan LP as the developer and issuing multifamily program funds and other financial assistance to Casa Yucatan LP for the 9% project at 1609 West 21st Place in the 25th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is an ordinance concerning the porting of tax increment financing funds from the Cicero Archer and Midway Industrial Corridor TIFs into the Cicero Stevenson TIF in connection to the proposed redevelopment of Leclerc Courts North at 4400 South Cicero Avenue in the 22nd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is an ordinance amending the authorizing ordinance for a redevelopment agreement with Hudson Michigan Avenue Owner LLC to provide tax increment financing funds for improvements at Hudson House at 2222 South Michigan Avenue in the 3rd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, it should be recorded as a no on this item.
Very well, hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number five is an ordinance amending the authorizing ordinance for a redevelopment agreement with BR Congress Owner LLC and Congress Theater NFP to provide tax increment financing funds for improvements at the Congress Theater at 2135 North Milwaukee Avenue in the 1st Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. I withdraw my so ordered with the leave of the body. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
It should be recorded as a no on this item.
Despite the division, hearing no objections, so ordered, again.
Items six through 13 are ordinances concerning amendments to the various tax increment financing redevelopment plans and projects to revise the expiration dates to the Inglewood Neighborhood TIF in the 6th, 16th, 17th, and 20th Wards, the Lawrence Kedzie TIF in the 33rd and 39th Wards, the Lake How You Made Area TIF in the 7th, 9th, and 10th Wards, the Central West TIF in the 27th and 34th Wards, the South Chicago TIF in the 7th and 10th Wards, the Lawrence Broadway TIF in the 46th, 47th, and 48th Wards, the Belmont Central TIF in the 30th, 31st, and 36th Wards, and the 63rd and Pulaski TIF... and the 63rd and Pulaski TIF in the 13th and 23rd Wards. I move passage of this items, of these items, by the same motion.
Chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
No objection to this item, but I do have a quick comment. Thank you, Mr. President. I am participating remotely and I was notified by the clerk's team that some of my colleagues are concerned that somebody other than me is voting. Our fantastic Elm system, once you guys approve Rule 59, does allow for us to log into our Elm system and do this. So I just wanted to reassure the body. I am here, I am listening, I am participating, and I am the only one casting my votes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair, you're welcome. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
We know that's her.
Chair recognizes Clerk Valencia.
I just wanted to clarify here, because I did talk, my team did talk to Alderwoman Haddon. Just so you know, the technology does allow you, we have not turned it on for committees to vote or for the council, because our rules state that you have to do a voice vote. And so until the rules change, we have to, I have to call on every single person that hasn't, when you're remote, you have to vote by voice remotely as well, because until we change the rules, you cannot use that function. So although Alderwoman Haddon, you're very savvy and you're the one who figured out how to use it remotely, the rules do not state that we have that authority to do it by that way. So that's why I have to ask for a voice vote, just to clarify.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk, for those items that have been moved up to number fourteen. If you're keeping score, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number fourteen is a substitute ordinance introduced by Alderman Ray Lopez and Alderman Pat Dowell, oh my goodness, amending, amending Municipal Code Chapter 1 through 19, subjecting all recipients of settlements or payments of claims to indebtedness checked by City Comptroller. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just to confirm that I have not taken leave of my senses, yes, Alderman Dowell and I have put this forward together to codify something that she has already been doing as Chairman of Finance, for which we all should be thankful, and that is working with the City Comptroller to ensure that those who are getting settlement funds from the City of Chicago have paid their debts to the City of Chicago. And I would ask our favorable consideration of this item. Thank you.
Well, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number fifteen is a communication transmitting reports of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were intended to for the month of October 2024 and November 2024. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Items numbers sixteen and seventeen consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago and denials of payments of various small claims against the City of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed for passage in the omnibus.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Items number eighteen are two proposed orders authorizing charitable solicitation on the public way for Planned Parenthood Federation of America Citywide from January 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025, and the American Civil Liberties Union Citywide, January 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025. These will be placed on file with the clerk. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Chair recognizes Chair Viegas for his report on Committee Economic Capital and Technology Development.
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good afternoon.
I'm with the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which met on Monday, December 9th. The Committee held a meeting, which was recessed and reconvened on Thursday, December 12th. At these meetings, the following items were recommended for passage. Items one on two, items one and two on the report are appointments to the Community Development Commission. Both Terrence Johnson and Ronald Milseth were approved for appointments to the Community Development Commission. I move for passage of these appointments by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three and through seven on the report are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas. The following individuals were recommended. Mohammed J. Butt, Sarah J. Blackstone, Nicholas P. Kosiak, Amanda Sadowski, and James Janis. I move for passage of these items by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items eight through eighteen are ordinances pertaining to scope of services, budget, tax levy, and service provider agreements that were approved for the following special service areas. District numbers seventeen, thirty-three, forty-eight, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two dash twenty-twenty-one, sixty, sixty-three, seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-seven. I move for passage of these items by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Final Committee, Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chair recognizes Chair Sixo Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held an in-person meeting on December 12th, 2024. The Committee has one report recommending passage of one ordinance. Item number one is Ordinance 2024 dash zero zero fourteen one nine four, negotiated or quick take acquisition of various properties on portions of South Taylor Street, South Canal Street, South Wall Street, and West DeCoven Street for Taylor Street Bridge and Viaduct Improvement Project in the 34th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call on the vote on Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the agreed-upon calendar, matters of the agreed-upon calendar. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've received from the Clerk Andrea in Valencia a total of five items proposed of the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tribulatory resolutions from the following alderpersons: Alderperson Dowell, Alderperson Lopez, Alderperson Mosley, and Alderperson Vasquez. I move these in the omnibus.
Very well, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dowell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to stand this morning to acknowledge the life of Bob Love, better known as Butterbean, for the Chicago Bulls. He was number ten. He was a catalyst for the Chicago Bulls. And if you ever go to the United Center and you look up, his jersey is hanging in the rafters. He was well-known within the City of Chicago, having visited a number of schools and just talking to people, uplifting the city, uplifting young people. And he died on November 18th. And so I wanted to just acknowledge his contributions to the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dowell. Hearing no objections, no other hands, so ordered. Now for new business. The Clerk will read the wards, beginning with the first.
Zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Quinn has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Chapter 4 dash 4, by adding a new section 4 dash 4 dash 331, prohibiting sale of cannabis hemp products in the 13th Ward, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Curtis has a proposed ordinance for approval of Platte of City Mall Lot 1 Resubdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Taylor has a proposed ordinance for approval of a Calderon Resubdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Taylor also has a proposed ordinance for approval of Platte of Calderon Resubdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Mosley has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4 dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package goods licenses on portions of West 115th Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Irvin has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Sections 4 dash sixty dash zero twenty-two and 4 dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional alcoholic liquor and package goods licenses on portions of West Sirmac Road, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Telefiero has a proposed ordinance for the correction of the City Council Journal of Proceedings of February 21st, 2024, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa and others have proposed ordinance for the Chicago Commission on Human Relations, directed to establish working group to address issues impacting BIPOC transgender and gender diverse communities in the City of Chicago and Cook County, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderperson Viegas has a proposed resolution to call for hearings on the implementation of enterprise resource planning technology systems, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderperson Viegas also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 2 dash ninety-two dash nine fifty-five, to permanently establish Veteran-Owned Small Business Participation Goal Program, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight. Alderperson Lawson has a proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the 44th Ward Allmatic Expense Account, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of Allmatic introductions.
Very well, thank you, thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin for unfinished business.
Mr. President, Alderman Dowell and I have noticed in file various items of unfinished business with the Clerk pursuant to Rule 41, pertinent to the consideration and passage of the 2025 budget. They are as follows: Number one, code corrections ordinance; number two, a series of proposed corrections and revisions to the 2025 budget recommendations and tax portion; number three, the 2025 annual appropriation ordinance as amended; number four, the substitute management ordinance; number five, the motorfield tax funds allocation ordinance; number six, the motorfield tax allocation intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Transit Authority and Cook County; number seven, the salary resolution; number eight, the substitute revenue ordinance and property tax levy. As that the Council discussed, at this time, the entire package was consisted of various matters I just identified. I reserve my right and Chairman Dowell's rights to close the discussion.
Very well, thank you very much. Are there any other orders that wish to speak? Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn. Okay, Alderman Quinn, do you wish not to be recognized? Yes, we are. The Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn. Okay, thank you very much. Alderman Quinn, if you would, oblige. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Forgive me, Alderman. Just a quick question. There were a number of amendments that were supposed to be provided. Are we having a discussion on the original? Or are we having a discussion on the amendments which have not yet been accepted as part of this package?
The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
If it, you can discuss both one or the other. I mean, it's all the same. I think we're pretty clear on what we're here to discuss. So if you wish to get hyper-technical, then yes. But again, we are here to discuss the 2025 budget. So if you want to talk about the amendments, the original, you want to go all the way back to introduction, choose as you wish, but it is our desire that we have this discussion now on the various points.
Very well, thank you very much for that clarification. The Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If there are, pardon me, Alderman Quinn, if there are any other orders, please. Thank you, thank you, Alderman Quinn.
I rise today in opposition to this budget. There are various reasons I cannot support this proposal. First and foremost, it is because we'll be right back here again next year. We need to be honest with ourselves. We did not right-size this budget. We haven't made enough cuts. We made no necessary adjustments. We didn't consider eliminating positions that may be redundant. Our pension obligations will continue to grow. We keep adding more and more people to the payroll. We keep spending. In fact, Mayor, your administration miraculously found more money for various committees than the 11th dollar of this process. We cannot continue to spend beyond our means. But we do. And as a result, we'll be faced with these same challenges next year. While there is no longer a property tax increase on the table, there are a number of nickel-and-dime revenue generators. More importantly, I cannot support this budget because the residents of the 13th Ward feel you are working against them, Mr. Mayor. They need a new police district, and they've been vocal about it. Nearly eighty-eight percent of the residents supported the idea in the primary election. But they have never been told that they won't be receiving one. Instead, Mr. Mayor, you've changed the narrative on them. They were given excuses in an op-ed that the FAA had issues with the project that, which multiple congressmen immediately debunked. Mr. Mayor, you tried to rewrite state law to use the facility designated for a police district as a storage unit. The sad reality is that the Southwest Side residents are doing all they can to keep their community safe on their own. They do their part every day. They work hard to keep our community safe. They clean graffiti. They attend CAPS meetings. They cook for the 8th District Police Officers on weekends when their days off are canceled. They watch the neighborhood and do everything they can to maintain a safe, thriving community. But they need help. And our officers, many of whom live in the 13th Ward, need support. They are working overtime to protect this city while there are not enough police officers to watch their own neighborhood. You've been out to our community, Mr. Mayor. You know the spirit and strength of the Southwest Side. The 8th District is the largest and busiest district in the city and has not changed since the 60s. Let me be clear. I know we are grappling with challenging, with a challenging budget. And I realize it's hard to ask for this project when we have so many financial obligations. But I believe we have reached the point of no return. We have an unattenable situation on the Southwest Side. And the cost of doing nothing is much higher than finding a solution. Let me repeat that. The cost of doing nothing is much higher than the files, than finding a solution. Mr. Mayor, we want to be part of that solution. We found and delivered to the city a potential police district facility for a dollar. We are ready to tour that facility with Superintendent Snelling. And, Mr. Mayor, we are ready to pursue a public-private partnership for a new police district without the city, if that's what needs to be done. Southwest Side residents cannot keep waiting for an answer as to why this critical project is not included in this budget. So, no. I cannot support a budget that asks my residents to keep giving more when they have real ass that are being ignored. I will always stand with the 13th Ward residents, and today I will vote no on a budget that does not support them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I too rise to voice my opposition to this budget. For numerous reasons. Last year, I spoke out vocally that we had a fictitious budget for this year. That budget materialized a $232 million shortfall after we spent hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars on migrants. I too, like my colleague, cannot support a budget that does not reflect support for my community. And before I get started, I just want to acknowledge and commend the fifteen aldermen who stood up and stopped the property tax train wreck. My colleagues have stood up saying no to property tax. And we, with the support of everybody in this room, sent a message fifty to nothing that we did not want property tax. Since then, we miraculously just, voila, went to 150. And you all rejected 150. We went to 68. Now miraculously, voila again. We go to zero. However, in order to get to zero, we are fining and fining the people of the City of Chicago to death. The people have said clearly that we want cuts and efficiencies. Cuts and efficiency is what the people have been asking for. But no, we want to ignore what the people are saying. You all hear it in your communities. And I'mma tell you, I know your phones are blowing up. I know you're getting calls from your residents. I know when you go to the grocery store, the people are telling you to vote no. But to ignore the will of the people, you all, is something that everybody in this room is gonna have to reckon with in a couple of years. And so when you're staring down a opponent that is saying, "I don't care, I'm gonna make sure that I vote in the best interest of my community", you're gonna have problems. Because when you look in your community in the eye and say, "I sold my vote for a little bit of this and a little bit of that". bit of this and a little bit of that with a letter here," and give me a letter there committing extra resources that we know we don't have.
Right.
Now, I'm gonna tell you. I told most of you all a couple of years ago, when the former mayor promised you all all this infrastructure for your vote. Where's the infrastructure?
Where?
Where's the infrastructure? But you gave your vote away two or three times over the same promise. Now, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again expecting a different result. Well, the result ain't no different. We have no money. The people have no more money.
Right. Right.
And they're just asking for cuts and efficiencies, y'all. This budget has increased five billion dollars in four years.
Woo.
That's bloat. That's bloat, and that's more bloat. We need to cut it. That's what the people are asking for, and that's all we've been trying to do. Now, people been trying to change the narrative, saying, you know, we want layoffs and services are gonna be cut, police are gonna be laid off, firemen gonna be laid off. Really, y'all? Do you all ever think for one minute that anybody in this body will allow police and fire to be laid off, to have streets and sand to be laid off, to have the different departments to be laid off? No.
Yeah.
We cannot go for the scare tactics. That's all they are. The boogeyman is coming.
Yeah.
If you don't do what I tell you to do.
Right.
So we have to stop this train wreck. We have to stop this spending.
We do.
We have to continue to fight for our people who have elected us to do the right thing, which we are not doing today.
Yeah.
Okay? It's easy. Yes, I know it's easy to go along just to get along. That's easy.
Right.
But you know what? It takes leadership, it takes guts, and it takes dedication to fight for what's right.
That's right.
That's what we have to do, y'all. We have to fight for what's right.
That's right.
Now, we've asked for different things in this budget. Alderman Riley and the group sent a letter to the budget director asking point-blank for information. Now, state law says we have to get our information from the budget office. Well, if we can't get the truth and get the right numbers from the budget office, how are we gonna make an educated decision on what's best for the people of the city of Chicago?
Yeah. Yeah.
If we cannot get the right information or get false information, made-up information, how can we make a solid decision on what's right?
That's right.
Now, this body, once again, we voted against our own interests by not having our own financial analysis that we've been fighting for for a long time. If we get that, we can get the truth, y'all. We don't have to get what somebody tells us and wonder whether it's the truth or not.
Right.
When we have a budget director that can justify four-hundred-thousand dollars for a committee that don't even exist for the mayor protest.
Yeah.
When we have a budget director that can justify giving extra security to people who people don't even know when they walk down the street.
That's right. That's right.
Now, we're talking...that's fact, y'all. That's the bloat that I'm talking about.
That's right.
And if we can identify with Alderman Lee, if we can identify those innuendos and those politricks throwing stuff in at the last minute, hoping that people don't find it, well, we found it.
We found it.
We exposed it, and they took some of it out. But I guarantee you all, if you hear me, hear me good today, there's a whole lot more hidden stuff in this budget.
Yeah.
There's a lot more that you all don't know about, and we're gonna be right back here again at the end...in mid-year, trying to figure out how we're gonna get more money. So I'm just imploring you all, for once, stand up and do the right thing.
Please do.
Stand up and do what your people are asking you to do. We are not gonna have a government shutdown.
No.
We're not gonna have mass layoffs. But if we can get to the grunt of what's going on in this budget, y'all, that's all we are asking you all to help us do.
Yes.
Don't take the easy route. Show some courage.
That's right.
Show some leadership.
That's right. That's right.
Don't go along just to get along.
Get along.
And so, again, this budget, it has a bunch of problems. I can't vote for it because of all the things that we don't know, and even the things we do know, I can't support.
Yeah.
So all I ask you all, really look at this, look at your soul, look at your heart, and back up and do what's right for your people, and vote no, and let's craft a budget that really reflects the values of the city of Chicago that the people have asked us to do, where the people can be proud to vote for a budget that we send them to make sure our community is our better place to live and play. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Yeah. Yeah.
The Chair recognizes Alder LaSpata.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Number one, I want to extend my thanks to everyone in this box who worked extremely diligently on this budget. I want to extend my thanks to everyone on this side of chambers who worked very hard on this budget. A lot of people that I agree with, a lot of people that I disagree with, talked about democracy. Democracy as the hard, messy, difficult, frustrating process that we work in to pass budgets. And I do think, in spite of my frustrations and challenges, that democracy is represented in the budget that is in front of us today. Do I think it is a complete and perfect reflection of my values, my community values? No. But it is a budget that moves us forward in ways that I think are responsible? Yes. We talk about frequently the voice of the people, the voice of Chicago, as though they were a monolith. And I feel like just being in this room together proves that that cannot and is never the case. While we were standing there, while others have spoken, I actually reviewed the budget feedback from my ward, and what they call on us to do is to invest in the city, to invest in our neighbors, to invest in our communities, and do so in ways that are responsible and stable. And while I feel like there are imperfections in this budget, as there are in any budget, I feel like we accomplished that for them. It holds on to the services that I think are most necessary to protect the vulnerable. It leads us, in some ways, in new and exciting directions. And so I'm proud today to vote on this budget while recognizing, again, the challenges in both the product and the process that got us here, and knowing that on your side, on our side, that there are commitments to move forward in ways that are productive and healthy. And I will only close by saying, because we've talked about it a lot today, whether it's relevant to today's budget, I have never met an undocumented resident of the first ward who wasn't bringing forward my community in powerful ways. Whether they were the children in our schools, whether they were working in our communities, homeowners starting businesses in our communities, I have never met an undocumented resident of my ward who I wasn't proud to call a neighbor and a resident of my community. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. First and foremost, let me thank this administration, specifically Mayor Johnson, for being an administration that is willing to compromise and actually discuss with this body how we achieve something that every single ward and our constituents asked for, was not to have a property tax increase. And that is something that was not done in previous administrations. I wish some of my colleagues will take themselves to the past to tell Mayor Rahm Emanuel in two thousand and sixteen, no to a six-hundred-million-dollar property tax increase. We needed that courage then. I wish some of our colleagues go back in time and stop themselves from privatizing a parking meter for seventy-five years that have been costly to the taxpayer. I tell you that I'm thankful for every single council member that is doing the right thing. On behalf of the residents of the twenty-fifth ward, a ward that has been affected the most with the highest property tax increase across the city, hard-working people, many of them public servants, that continue to serve the city of Chicago, that are thankful that we are responsible, when others now are talking about responsibility, fiscal responsibility, but yet find themselves under names in federal indictment processes. So I tell you, I am thankful for this body for not engaging in council wars because that is not what the city needs today. We are a target by an incoming federal administration that is not only threatening our city with mass deportations, they are threatening our city by cutting federal resources that are gonna harm our city.
Yeah.
And I know that there are voices that are vocal, and I am...I am...know that there are a vocal minority here trying to sabotage the city. I am thankful for those of us who are thinking for the best interest of the city of Chicago, not less than that. That is what our constituents deserve. What we achieved here in this budget, is it is a fair compromise. When we're talking about cutting of middle management positions, when we're talking about taking from the mayor's office, isn't that what many colleagues asked for? Then you got it. If we're talking about doing the right thing, though, I do think it is the right thing to do. It is now a different time in Springfield, and it is a different time today in the City Council. So we need a united front so that we listen to actual what our constituents say. I am gonna quote the same polling that was conducted by some of colleagues. What the constituents also said is that we don't invest enough in mental health services, eighty percent of the people. What that same polling said is that we don't invest enough for the unhoused. We just heard a testimony, a real testimony, by those affected by the violence of the people who are unhoused. We don't invest enough in people. So to talk about the Trumpers and those who want to cut critical services, the Office of the People's Disabilities, CDPH, you tell me that that is not listening to the Trumpers that want to destroy our city. So I tell you that today, we have a choice to move forward, to invest in people, and to also listen once again to what our constituents have said. Almost eighty percent of our constituents on November fifth ask us, almost eighty percent, to go to Springfield and to encourage the state of Illinois to tax the rich, a surcharge on the millionaires making more than one million dollars a year for property tax relief. That is what our city needs. And I tell you, the Illinois Department of Revenue projects that I will bring to our city and the state four-point-five-billion dollars. That is the structural changes. That's what we need to do, a united front at a local level to protect our city. I am thankful today for those of us and every single council member who is standing for the...for the protection of the human rights, the rights of every single constituent, and the sake of our city. That was the stake, and that's what I'm in support of this budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in opposition, and I intend to vote no, and I just want to state my reasons why. First of all, I do acknowledge democracy has been a factor in this. You yourself acknowledged that, Mr. President. You responded to our feedback about the property tax increase, and we stand with a budget where the property tax increase has been zeroed out. But my goal has been to defeat the property tax increase. And ladies and gentlemen, I suggest to you, we did not defeat it, we simply delayed it. The popular analogy is we kick the can down the road. That analogy doesn't quite work because cans don't grow larger when you kick them. And believe me, this one will. We will be right back here at this time next year, dealing with the same set of circumstances that created this structural deficit, and it will be even larger. It will be even more formidable. We did not do the work we need to do. We started. We started to do that work, and I...again, I want to point out something positive. I appreciate the initiative for the operational efficiencies and the expenditure efficiencies, and I just want to point out two things. With the operational efficiency, where we're gaining eight-point-six-million dollars in spending reductions by going through the budget and looking for vendors that are either overcharging us, contracts that should be renegotiated, eight-point-six-million dollars is a paltry sum for such an exercise. And I'm gonna give you one example that apparently was overlooked. We are three years delayed on a project at the OEMC nine-one-one center to replace the CAD, the Computer-Assisted Dispatch System. The vendor, Central Square, who we hired to do this, is three years behind in its final deliverable, and there's a fine of ten-thousand dollars a day for every day beyond the deadline. And they are three years beyond the deadline. That's ten-point-nine-million dollars. That's bigger than the total amount that this contract efficiency exercise has found as a part of next year's budget. We're only beginning to scratch the surface. On the payroll reductions, reducing the headcount by ten people in your office, Mr. President, twenty-six across the rest of the enterprise, that is point-zero-nine percent of our headcount, ladies and gentlemen. I think we can do better. And by the way, out of the twenty-six positions that we're eliminating, ten of them are in the police department. Eight of those ten are responsible for compliance with the consent decree. Does anyone really think that's a good idea? I certainly don't. I think it's a good idea to go through the budget line by line and look for efficiencies, look for reductions in headcount, look for savings we can find in contracts. This is not that. And unless we do it, we're going to be right back here next year with the structural deficit that there's no way out of, except a property tax increase. And we're gonna have this same exercise and this same argument all over again. It's unavoidable, and we have to do it. The time to do it is now, not next year. I don't look forward to this budget debate next year. As bad as this was, ladies and gentlemen, it's probably going to be worse next year, and I regret that. I have to vote no.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was hoping to vote yes on this budget today, and as the vice chair of the Budget Committee, I've worked really hard over the recent weeks to be a part of the solution, to bring people together, to be reasonable and flexible and accommodating to a diversity of concerns. So I'm deeply disappointed today to say that I cannot vote to support this deeply flawed budget proposal.
Yeah. 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 Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman.
It's...it's our job to be responsible stewards of our constituents' tax dollars, to ask the tough questions and to demand accountability where it's lacking. The services we rely on and the hard-working people who provide them aren't free. The taxes we pay ensure we can have clean streets, police, firefighters, librarians, public health nurses, and mental health workers, and more. We're all adults here, and we understand all of that. So while I express concerns about raising property taxes without ensuring city spending was efficient and as transparent as possible, I'm just as concerned about this new plan. We've all felt the pressure to oppose a property tax increase this year, and if we're being honest, every year. But simply dropping the property tax increase without other meaningful structural measures to raise revenue and address this deficit is irresponsible. We can't afford to keep kicking the can down the road, and I fear that this is what we're doing here. All of the experts...all expert accounts indicate that this budget's over-reliance on one-time remedies rather than structural solutions are gonna lead us to multiple credit rating agency downgrades, leading to higher costs of borrowing and worse financial position for all of us in the out-years. Respectfully, while I know everyone is exhausted and has worked hard, there's much more work to be done to improve this process on the part of your office, sir. And because of this disorganized process, I fear that we're now set up for an even worse set of choices next year, for an even worse budget season. Mayor, I hope that you and your team will conduct a thorough post-mortem on this process starting right away. Please don't wait until August to start thinking this over. Our shared constituents can't afford this level of chaos again. I stand ready to participate in that honest review process and to help be a part of a responsible and fair solution next year. Today, for all the reasons I've mentioned and more, I am a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Haddon. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off by, I wish I could say that I can't believe we're here today. I can't believe this happened. Like, I can't believe this process has been so difficult. But I can believe it because myself and many others have predicted it since before October Today, we're being asked to vote on the fourth budget proposal for 2025. This latest proposal eliminates the property tax increase by making some reductions in middle management positions across departments, but also by employing more one-time, non-structural solutions than the last proposal. City budgets are the product of imperfect processes and tough choices, and I've never seen a budget proposal that I would call great or that I was excited to support in my time in this body. This one's no different. So while this proposal may have landed at a result that on its face appears to respond to what constituents have asked for, I agree with Alderman Hopkins, it's really just delaying harder choices for a few months, not even a year, just for a few months. You know, he said we didn't defeat the property tax. I'll be clear, I wasn't trying to defeat the property tax. Government's not immune to inflation, and the cost of everything is going up. We need more revenue, and yes, we need to go to Springfield. I've been in this body for five years, and everybody's talking about going to Springfield. And we can look at those creative problem-solving pieces and think outside the box. But we also have to solve our problems for today by working within the means of the tools that we have available. When the October 30th initial proposal came out, I told 49th Ward constituents that we would likely need to have some kind of property tax increase based on the budget gap, but that we could reduce it. We didn't need to do a $300 billion property tax increase. And, you know, last week, I voted in the Budget Committee on the last proposal, which had it down to 68.5. This wasn't a fantastic proposal either, but it was grounded in some sound financials and compromises, right? It closed our budget gap, it right-sized the property tax, increasing it to barely more than CPI. It also included continued investments in what Chicagoans, and I know my constituents consistently tell us that they want, mental health supports, housing and homelessness support, public safety and infrastructure investments. I was prepared to vote in support of that proposal on Friday as well, but the administration didn't have the vote, so here we are. Mr. Mayor, we have heard a lot about your progressive values throughout this process, and I don't doubt them. But how we do things is just as important as what we do. And the way you've led this process has left the city council fractured, Chicagoans less trusting in government, and it's left our city in an extremely vulnerable position as we enter the next year with the promise of attacks from a new presidential administration. We are not prepared, and the fault lies squarely with you and your administration. You delayed this process against many voices telling you that it was a bad idea and leaving us less time to come together. Constantly changing budget hearing schedule made it hard to keep pace with the work in our wards and meant less time to meaningfully engage our constituents in the transparent and accountable processes around the budget that many of us do. And when some of, when some of, when some of us expressed strong concerns about the direction of the strategy that your team was taking, time and again, we were ignored, rebuffed. So we may pass a budget today, but this delayed process has already caused strife and threats to city services as contracts for delegate agencies whom we rely upon for the delivery of our vital services are delayed. They don't get contracts until we appropriate the funds, people. And normally, we appropriate, we pass a budget before Thanksgiving, and it still takes them weeks to get contracts together and out to people. So we're going to feel the pain of this in the first quarter of 2025. And that's not the pain of what the budget is, but the delay, the delay. And like, the delay in process just shows an utter disregard for people's time, disrespect for people's time. This budget may have some progressive outcomes, but the process to get here was anything but progressive. The majority of our council's Progressive Caucus, which I co-chair with Alder Vasquez, will be voting in support of this budget. And let me be clear that without our support, we would have had to recess again today. Our caucus's 19 members represent people from every corner of Chicago and all their diverse experiences and perspectives. And we see many of our priorities reflected in this budget. No layoffs, investments in housing and homelessness, mental health and public safety. We also have a better, we're going to have a better, organized, more transparent process next year because, because of demands that members in our caucus and others made, right? And the management ordinance, so we're going to be given critical information that we rely upon in a timely manner next year. Didn't happen this year. So to my colleagues who are voting for this budget today, thank you for ensuring that bills will get paid, services will be delivered, and that we have continuity of government. To my colleagues who are voting against this budget, thank you to many of you for engaging in good faith and working to make this proposal better. Much of your feedback is reflected here as well. And to my colleagues who submitted a letter suggesting that we slash and burn the budget but never offered any actual amendments, best of luck on your crusade. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you, you're muted, you're muted, Chairwoman Haddon. Alderwoman, oh, she's finished? Oh, okay. I'm seeing the screen move. Okay, very well. Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. My ward elected me because they wanted to turn the page from the way the city's politics had been done for decades. I ran on a commitment to improving accessibility, transparency, and accountability, and it is in that spirit that I speak in opposition to this budget. The lack of leadership and collaboration from this administration made a difficult budget even harder. From introducing the budget two weeks late to including a $300 million property tax increase without the due diligence and finding efficiencies, to the last-minute changes without proper time for us to even consider the changes before calling for a vote, this budget process has left many Chicagoans, including many members of this council, feeling a lack of confidence and a lack of trust in the city's government. That lack of confidence is warranted for several reasons. First, the failure of this administration to advocate effectively for the state's help in sustaining and finding sustainable revenue for our city budget and our schools, and instead of advocating for a publicly-funded private stadium, has left us without the allies we need to address our financial challenges. Second, the administration's repeated failure to take seriously the calls for efficiencies led to a loss in confidence of not only this body but of the public. I believe in robust city services, and we know that those aren't possible without revenue. That does not mean that we can entirely depend on revenue without also ensuring that government is being run as efficiently as possible. It is possible to find efficiencies without jeopardizing the safety and services that Chicagoans depend on. In one week, the administration was able to find over $3 million in overtime savings in just one department out of the 35. We should be doing the same in all departments and requiring independent audits going forward, starting with the departments that cost taxpayers the most. Lastly, and most importantly, the administration's prioritization of short-term fixes over long-term financial sustainability will put us in an even worse position in years to come. Chicago has a history of making financial decisions in the interest of short-term political expediency that lead to disastrous long-term consequences, and this budget represents more of the same. By choosing to skip a payment to retire a $40 million debt for a one-time gap closure for a short-term fix, this administration is saddling the city with even more debt that will make future budgets worse. Chicago's structural revenue percentage will go down from 78% to 69%, which will likely lead to a credit downgrade that will cost future taxpayers billions of dollars. While these expedient choices and one-time fixes help avert this year's property tax, they do not represent responsible financial management. The majority of this body voted to allow annual property tax increases tied to the CPI under the Lightfoot administration, and multiple independent agencies have confirmed that this policy represents good governance. The city's own analysis shows that if Chicago had increased property taxes by the CPI since 1977, that by 2023, it would have ended up with the same property tax levy that was implemented by Mayor Emanuel, but without the need to sell off city assets, generate short-term revenue to plug budget holes, borrow irresponsibly, or underfund pensions and massively drive up pension-related debts. In other words, had we implemented this practice from the beginning, Chicagoans would be investing the same in city services as they are now, but with much greater return on investment. The kind of thinking that led us to this budget here only reaffirms that it is a priority that we fundamentally change our budget process. I do want to give credit to members of the Johnson administration, specifically Budget Director Annette Guzman and City Comptroller Chase Rainwinkle, who engaged in good-faith negotiations that led to the responsible budget reforms that I and others were able to get included in this budget. These responsible budget reforms can help us be more deliberative as a body, can provide the accountability and transparency necessary to provide better results and more well-informed decision-making that can lead to better outcomes for all Chicagoans. I call on my colleagues to join me in committing to year-round oversight that will lead us to better, more responsible budgets in the future. I ask Mayor Johnson and his leadership team to learn from this, to learn that the bad decisions, the lack of collaboration, the inability to listen to those who disagree or those who aren't viewed as being on the team, the disingenuous talking points that are disconnected from reality, the expedient decisions that will cost us and future generations, all of that needs to end. We cannot continue down this path that undermines the progressive movement, that undermines the ability to govern responsibly, and that further erodes the public's confidence in government. Chicagoans don't have any more patience for excuses, for hollow, evasive answers, and for obliviousness from their mayor. Chicagoans deserve serious, responsible, and focused leadership to address the challenges ahead. This budget will pass because the city council understood that government shutdown isn't an option, but we shouldn't consider this budget passing as a win. Future budgets will now be worse because of this administration's failure to engage, to listen, and for the mayor's failure to truly be the collaborator-in-chief. I am grateful for the group of responsible alders, good government organizations like the Civic Federation, BGA, the CTBA, and our labor allies like Adrian Alexander from Ask Me for doing everything possible to try and make this budget better. I'm grateful for your partnership. I also want to thank every neighbor who reached out to ask us to do better. While this budget does not, in my opinion, deliver on that promise, I am determined to do everything I can to keep working toward that goal. We must work together to do the hard and necessary work of creating a more sustainable, responsible budget in years to come. Chicagoans deserve no less. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to these? Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
That's a I-don't-know. Good afternoon, Mr. President, and members of the city council. I rise today to pose a question. And it's a question based on a book that I bought a few years ago, a little light reading, a book that says, "What If?" It's a remarkable collection of essays from historians that talk about the possibilities of what could have been during some of mankind's most notable moments throughout our history. What if Alexander the Great hadn't died at such a young age? What if Genghis Khan had conquered Europe? Or if the British colonies had lost their bid for independence? What if the Civil War had ended differently? Or what if Winston Churchill was never elected or selected to become British Prime Minister? What if Pope Pius XII had actually spoken out about Nazism and the Holocaust? It's easy to look back centuries and say, "What if?", and have the luxury of time to come up with the conjecture to have a discussion. But today, I have my own set of what ifs. What if, when our first letter went out, since someone likes talking about bullet points, what if the first letter that we shared with our colleagues that was titled "The Spirit of Collaboration" had actually been answered when we discussed the fact that 78% of Chicagoans were likely to vote against their alderman if they supported any property tax? What if we actually sat together from the start of this process to discuss things in a manner that was befitting of what all of our wards wanted? What if, just a few days later, Mr. President, your administration would have listened and acknowledged the fact that many of us had called for the right sizing of government? And yes, we did break it down very easily in no uncertain terms, that of the $5.6 billion in the corporate fund, we wanted to go back to pre-COVID-level spending, which would have, despite an adjustment for inflation, reduced the budget by $568 million. Folks said, "What are you talking about? Where?" We shared it with you. We told you which departments were bloated. We told you which departments were different, and incidentally, it wasn't police and fire. We said that these cuts should be the starting point for a conversation, for a line-by-line discussion with every department to justify why they needed the increased spending. And there were some departments, Mr. President, that were already reaching out, saying, "We can justify that spending." And I said, "Great. I look forward to having you called back before the committee so we could have this discussion." Sadly, that was a discussion that never happened. Again, we continued despite this council's rejection of a $300 million property tax with a budget that had, in effect, no revenue attached to it. We continued with our process rather than getting back to the line-by-line discussions that we wanted to have. And then, just a few short days ago, this meeting was abruptly called to an end because nobody in this room wanted to vote for that budget. $68 million tax increase, $180 million in other fines, fees, and whatever became today's stack of amendments we got at 1 o'clock this morning. The PowerPoint was great yesterday, but finally, we see in writing. And what are we learning today in writing? Why yeses, why nos are becoming yeses? Because things like the sidewalk shoveling program, which was taken out, are now back It took us all of 15 minutes on Tuesday of last week to try and go through the amendments last time, but we're not going to have that chance today because this isn't a committee meeting. This is city council, which means when a budget amendment eventually is made, it's going to be just an up or down. It's not a discussion, it's not a debate, we're not going to hear from the CFO, the Budget Director, anybody, or the comptroller. It's going to be, "Trust us. Trust us that what we said is legitimate." But my what ifs aren't done, Mr. President, because 15 of us, the aldermen of the 2nd Ward, 9th Ward, 10th Ward, 13th Ward, 18th Ward, 23rd Ward, 24th Ward, 31st Ward, 32nd Ward, 36th Ward, 41st Ward, 42nd Ward, 45th Ward, 50th Ward, and of course, the 15th Ward, stood up and said to you yesterday, and to all of you, that despite the fact that we had given you a list cutting almost $600 million just based on the inflation adjustments, we came back with something different yesterday. We came back with $824 million in cuts based on what is right in front of us today. Cuts that are more than just bullet points, cuts that, as we have heard about some of the police spending and the nonexistent office spending, but we also talked about cuts to departments that don't even have the efficiencies that were promised to taxpayers years ago, like the Office of the Public Safety Administration, which, if we allowed police, fire, and OEMC to do their thing, would save $61.3 million. We talked about not paying, not paying, the $175 million pension payment to non-teacher CTU members over at the Board of Education, a separate government body, by the way. And why should we not pay them? Because we already paid them once, and they stiffed us, and now they're going to stiff us again while we pay them for their pension. We said, "Let's maintain funding levels for our youth, for our homelessness," and not get confused by calling it the migrant mission 2.0. get confused by calling it the Migrant Mission 2.0. We even proposed something that was referenced on the very first day of the budget hearings, which we heard nothing since, which was why the Corporate Fund, which is funded by property taxes, has to make pension payments for all of the special revenue funds that exist, the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, the Emergency Management Fund, the TIP Fund, the Affordable Housing Fund. Why are we making pension payments through the Corporate Fund for those special revenue funds and then getting reimbursement later? Because that reimbursement falls off the books at the end of the year, and those total pension payments equaled $230 million. $230 million that property taxpayers have to pay on the front end just so we can get reimbursed and shunt off to some secret fund later in unassigned surpluses. Now, I know that my colleagues have said, "Well, show me the specifics." Mr. President, we are the legislative branch. We do not have 70 people at our beck and call to run the numbers, and even when we shared the numbers, no one wanted to answer those numbers. We could have had, and still can, by the way, have an in-depth, robust, and to use the word collaborative, discussion on this because we are still 15 days away from the deadline. What if we had started at zero 47 days ago? What if we had taken this effort to cut every single day? In 24 hours' time, your administration saved $2.8 million simply by cutting 26 jobs out of the budget? This is what we got again at 1 o'clock this morning. Now, if we were to do that every single day for 47 days, imagine the amount of money we could save from this budget. Because when we say, "Cut the fat, cut the middle management," one singular Assistant Commissioner from three different departments is not enough. It is not enough to say that. What we have seen, Mr. President, as of late, is an effort to rewrite history. Because there are some folks, who I don't necessarily agree with, who did stand up from the beginning and say, "No taxes," and I applaud them for standing up for that. But there are many other individuals who say, "This is what we wanted from the beginning, no property tax. This is the right sizing we wanted from the beginning." And that is not true. Because every iteration of this budget, and there have been four of them, had a property tax, or fees, or whatever, and every single one of them had the go-along gang cheering for its passage. We are the ones who stood up. We are the ones who have been driving this conversation, and we can still do better. We don't need to result, we don't need to rely on recalibrating, reconfiguring, and reforecasting just to get to equal on both sides. We've also seen, Mr. President, as we talk about the future, and I know your legacy is top of mind, next year's budget discussions are only eight months away. We have heard from our creditors on multiple occasions that we are going to get downgraded if we do not address our pension payments, if we don't pay our debt, if we only rely on one-term fixes, and somehow we manage to accomplish all three in this budget. We know what is going to happen. Because despite all those things that are done, that we've done up to this point, the instability factor remains here as well. The lack of trust and faith is evident by so many, even among those who call themselves your most ardent supporters. We have to do better. And allow me to end with this, Mr. President. Because I don't need to think back to history, I don't need to play Back to the Future. I remember when I first was elected in 2015, and I remember what the $550 million property tax was, and I did not like that. It pained me to do that. But do you know why we had to do that? For those of you who like pointing the fingers at those of us that had to make that choice? We did that because everyone before us had kicked the can to avoid raising taxes, to avoid cuts, to avoid right sizing government, to avoid living within our means. We kept taking out more and more credit, borrowing, bonding, whatever they had to do back then to avoid any kind of fiscal accountability. In 2015, that check came due. It had to be paid. And if you think that dodging or cutting 27 jobs is going to be enough to avoid that conversation in eight months, when we are facing a $1.1 billion deficit already, and $1.3 billion in the year after that, you are sadly, sadly mistaken. The answer today should be no, because the question is "what if?" But what will be when this goes through and we fail our constituents again? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Aldo Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We all are elected by our constituents to represent them and their needs. So I want to tell you a little bit about mine. I represent the 26th Ward, Humboldt Park, Logan Square, West Town, Elmo's Side, Belmont Craigin, where constituents have seen assessments displace them and where for-sale signs have gone up rapidly, where one more dollar is the difference between someone deciding to stay in my ward and them leaving. When I came here on Friday, I wasn't a yes vote. I just wasn't, no matter how much I wanted to be. Because there are constituents that walk into my office every single day terrified. If they get to stay in the neighborhood they've been calling home their entire life because they are continuously priced out. I also have constituents, young people, 16, 17, 18-years-old, who live in households with single-family parents, who have to be financial contributors to their household, so they need youth employment. I was also able to house over 80 households out of Humboldt Park last week because of rapid rehousing dollars to support our homeless. We are able to ensure that people get to keep their jobs and won't receive pink slips next week, who are also heads of their households. Today, I'm a yes vote, and I'm a yes vote for every single family that doesn't have to worry that my vote is going to be the vote that displaces them from a neighborhood that's rapidly gentrifying, where every single day families are hanging on by a thread because they're making difficult decisions between paying that tax bill, utilities, and putting food in their refrigerator, where young people get to have youth employment, be peacekeepers, mediators, restorative justice practitioners, where we have violence-prevention dollars that are going to solve for the gang problems in which one, in which one street is the border between two rival gangs in my neighborhood. This budget invests in that. Now, is this budget perfect? No. I don't know if any other large budget of a large enterprise such as the City of Chicago will ever come close to perfect, do you all? But I have a responsibility to make sure that I deliver for the 26th Ward. That's what my people elected me to do. I won my election by making sure that I fight gentrification, and increasing taxes is a part of that vicious cycle of displacing people out of places that they love to call their home. Now, I know that we have an uphill battle next year, and here's my commitment. I plan to roll up my sleeves January 1. I hope that everybody in this body is going to support a program like Pilot, pay in lieu of taxes so that we could bring that revenue in to solve for some serious structural gaps. I mean, I'm not oblivious, I know we got serious structural issues, but I have a commitment that for the remaining of my term, I'm going to ensure that I contribute to aiding the issue, not gaslighting it. We have a fiscal responsibility, and I know that people are here representing their constituents. It's why I respect people's votes today. But I want people to understand mine, because we're elected by our constituents, and I know that I'm doing them well today, because when they are looking at their tax bills next year, I wasn't the vote that displaced them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to these items? All right, we have our final three alders that wish. Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to speak to a number of issues related to this revised budget, and just want to remind my colleagues that six weeks ago, you came before us and told us that we had no choice but to raise property taxes by $300 million. And then after that didn't sell, you came back to us and said, "We absolutely have to raise property taxes $150 million." And to the credit of my colleagues, they said, "No." So you came back with $68.5 million. And then just last Friday, again, congratulations to all my colleagues for not taking the bait and saying no. And then by today, just a few hours after Friday, we're down to zero. Because all of you, regardless of your ideology, held firm, and we deserve some congratulations for that work. However, as has been mentioned by previous speakers, this administration, over the course of just two days, was able to identify more savings and cuts in this budget, albeit not large ones, and they could have done much, much better had they made a real and legitimate effort at doing so. But we can't pat ourselves on the back for this budget, and I've heard colleagues talk about the impact of property taxes going up on gentrification. They're 100% correct. And I wish, for my colleague who just spoke, that, and again, I respect her for her principles because guess what? I can see what's going on in the community that she represents. Unfortunately, this isn't going to obviate property taxes for those folks next year. And in fact, we're going to be looking at a whopper of a bill next year. And why is that? Well, the way that the administration, your administration, Mr. President, has achieved these savings is through reconfiguring your savings projections and recalculating revenue projections and using deferred payments to push off obligations due today. And those gimmicks, that blend of gimmicks guarantees us the need for a massive property tax increase next year. And it's not going to be $68.5 million, folks, just watch. It's going to be big. Delaying a $40 million line of credit payment for a year to avoid a property tax isn't savings. That payment is now going to cost us the same $40 million next year, plus interest penalties. Now, when a cost goes up over time, that's not a savings, that's an additional cost. And so that's what's being used, one of those gimmicks I mentioned, to obviate the need for this property tax that the mayor's been on a crusade to raise. That's irresponsible. That is not good governance, and it's wrong. I'd like to congratulate the Office of Budget Management for finding a whopping 26 more vacancies to eliminate in this budget, despite the fact that a number of members of the City Council here offered up hundreds of funded vacancies, funded vacancies that we know will not be reasonably filled in the next calendar year. And we're talking about tens of millions of dollars in savings, yet all we could come up with was 26 more vacancies to eliminate? It's pathetic. And then last week, we spent a lot of time, actually, not nearly enough, but some time going through the last round of budget amendments, where we caught some interesting little tidbits, and the press did a great job exposing those. Things like the Water Department paying for a security detail for the City Treasurer. The Water Department is an enterprise fund, meaning the revenues raised within that enterprise fund are supposed to be meant to be spent on water. And the last time I checked, the City Treasurer does not work at the Water Department. We also talked about the Office of Vice Mayor. And again, I said it last week, I'll say it again, I consider Alderman Burnett a friend. But having served as Vice Mayor under Mayor Emanuel and being appropriated exactly $0 to do that job, I executed that job perfectly. And I don't blame Alderman Burnett. He wouldn't need that budget if the previous Chairman of Zoning Staff weren't still fulfilling those duties in the committee. Alderman Burnett could have put his folks in there to do that job, but that was a political deal, more fluff packed into this budget that folks weren't willing to undo. And that's not fiscal responsibility. I want to applaud our colleague Alderman Vasquez, Mr. President, for working very hard to make some, I think, very reasonable changes to improve transparency and collaboration, that's a word you've been throwing around a lot, on city budgets. But if you actually look at the revisions in the ordinance before us today, the way it's written, because we didn't pass your irresponsible budget on Friday, there's a poison pill here that says, "By not doing so, Alderman Vasquez's offer is moot," because we didn't pass it by December 13th, as is spelled out clearly in the ordinance here before us. So one of the highlights of this ordinance that we could be celebrating today has been rendered moot because you didn't draft the ordinance properly. And to our colleague Alderman Laspada, who's been fighting hard for a pilot program for snow removal on sidewalks, and we can debate the merits of that one way or another, sad news for you as well, colleague. Unfortunately, the $1 million you were promised has been reduced to a half a million. And to my colleague Alderman Moore, who has been passionately working hard on behalf of his constituents to deliver park facility improvements for his ward, which I applaud him for, I don't see the money for your park district facilities in this budget either. You know, the group of 15, which has been mentioned over the last few weeks, is not a group of likely suspects to be working together. Everyone knows here, who's been here long enough, that Alderman Beal and I have had lots of disagreements over the decade and a half-plus we've served together, yet on this issue, we've come together and we've been working hand in hand every single day. And that's because we know the consequences that are going to come with approving a fiscally irresponsible budget this year. You know, this coalition, this work group that some of my colleagues like to refer to as MAGA extremists, or the Brodoliac 29, is about as diverse as they can get. African-Americans, Latinos, Asian-Americans, Caucasians, men, women, Anthony Sada Talians. And I could tell you, to try and make this a racial thing, or a classist thing, or a corporate billionaire thing, is baloney. And it's empty rhetoric, and no one here should be buying that, no one. That group dug in deep and set our political differences aside. There's a lot of different ideology in that group, too, to try and get this right on behalf of our collective constituents, our taxpayers, the folks we're supposed to work for. And sadly, those suggestions were dismissed and ignored, and they were dismissed as, "Ah, nonsense" from ideologues, from extremist conservatives. And if you look at this group, nothing could be further from the truth. And to my colleagues who rightfully demanded that Shot Spotter be turned back on until we have a system in place to replace it, that's not in this budget. And some of you said you wouldn't vote for a budget that didn't include it. It's not in here, so careful how you vote. But that was 33 aldermen, and if we all held firm on that today, we could force this administration to go back and work a little harder. It was mentioned that it seems like every time we push back on your administration's budget, Mr. President, it gets a little bit better. And last I checked, this is not the last day constitutionally we could approve a city budget. We've still got a little bit more time here. And I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and continue to work, because this is insufficient. And I know a lot of folks are going to try and just hang on to the fact we eliminated that property tax, which was the right thing to do, as good enough to vote for this particular budget. But if you look how it's being paid for, it's just smoke and mirrors. Don't congratulate yourselves, colleagues, for having passed a responsible budget that eliminated a property tax increase, because guess what? You're going to be coming back here next year, scratching your head, saying, "Well, how on earth did we get to this place? How could this happen? How could this happen?" It happens because of the way you vote today. It happens because of the way you vote today. So keep that in mind. There is still a little bit of time left for you to get this right. Withhold your vote and force this budget team to do its work. And go back and make further adjustments, real cuts, real efficiencies. That's what a good budget is made of. It's not there yet, folks. I want to thank all of you, though, for getting us this close. We're almost there. But not if you let the administration off the hook today. So I guess I'm going to finish up real quick, because it really, really stuck with me. For one of my colleagues, one of my socialist colleagues, to get up here and lecture all of us about fiscal responsibility at a time when our colleague is looking to blow a billion-dollar hole in future city budgets by creating a brand-new, massive TIF district in Pilsen, at a time when this administration has prioritized closing TIF districts throughout the city. And by the way, I'm okay with that idea. That, I think, is the great irony. Telling us what's fiscally responsible when we're about to divert $1 billion away from local taxing bodies for someone's fiefdom. That's irresponsible, and it's hypocritical, and it's wrong. So, colleagues, please get this right, please. You can hold on to this vote. For a couple more days, we can get a much better budget. Don't sell your vote cheap.
That's right!
Hang in there, and let's do this right. I'm voting no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Chair. You know, I talked to many of my residents about what we do here at City Hall. And recently, one of them reached out to me and said, "I can't believe that there's no efficiencies in the most recent 2025 budget proposal." And I said, "What are you talking about? That's not true. There's hundreds of millions of dollars in efficiencies." And I had to explain to them and walk them through the process that got here. First, when the mayor put forward his budget proposal, as he is statutorily required to do so, him and his budget team included 3% across-the-board cuts. It seems that in the conversations that have occurred since October, we've lost track of that. The reality is, is that this budget started with efficiencies baked into the first proposal. Then Alderman came forward and said, "Well, I'd like to see cuts here, I'd like to see cuts there, or I think we can find more efficiencies here." And departments did exactly that. We've heard some conversation this afternoon about the fact that, from one week to another, departments found more efficiencies. Well, that's a direct result of the requests that were coming from this body. To me, that shows a collaborative and responsive process. Then Alderman said, "Well, we want to see the mayor take a cut." And so the mayor came forward today and puts forward a proposal that cuts $1 million from his office. I've been here for 10 years, and nearly every single year that mayor's office has grown, to my knowledge and to my recollection, this is the first year that the mayor's office shrinks in the past decade. And that's a direct result of advocacy from this council. So when you look at the facts, when you look at the timeline, you see a budget that has changed and morphed over time to be responsive to the requests that are coming from this council, to be responsive to the requests that we are making because we are seeking to best represent our constituents. And so the truth is that this budget contains over $450 million in efficiencies and savings. The truth is that this budget is fiscally responsible, and it is putting a down payment down on our future because it continues to make a $272 million pension advance, which is what many of my colleagues have called for. I, like others, felt like we could reduce that pension advance in order to get us to a zero property tax increase. However, this budget is responsive to the requests and the input that is coming from members of the city council. We are paying down and saving billions of dollars in the future, thanks to that pension advance and thanks to the hard work of labor to continue to get us to make progress on the issue of paying down our pensions, which are our promise. So what does this budget do? Voting yesterday delivers a zero property tax increase to our residents, which they have asked us to do. What does this budget do? It saves us billions of dollars in the future because it is fiscally responsible and includes a $272 million pension advance. What does this budget do? It delivers $450 million-plus in efficiencies, including by cutting things that others did not want to cut. I don't love every single thing in this budget. But what I do love is that it has the largest TIF surplus in the city history, helping to solve the financial issues at CPS, while at the same time helping us to balance our budget and offset a property tax increase. What I do love is that this budget continues to make critical investments in things like addressing homelessness in our communities. It was so cold the other day. It was so cold, and I woke up in the morning, and in my home, where I have gas and I have heat, I was cold. And I thought about the people that were sleeping in Logan Square in tents. And I thought about the fact that, when I came with them in DFSS earlier this month, we had no more funds to offer them, to provide them with housing. We must continue to make critical investments in basic city services. We must continue to fund tree trimming. We must continue to fund all of the things that our residents want to see and want us to do. And so this budget, voting yes, as I will today, will deliver zero property taxes, will deliver the things that our residents need, will help make sure that youth have summer opportunities, will make sure that people have affordable and accessible mental health. Is it perfect? No. Has it been pulled in a million different directions? Yes. Has it changed and morphed over time in response to the input that's coming from Alder people in this body? Absolutely yes. And so I look forward to voting yes today, and I thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by thanking you. I want to stay as respectful as possible because you nor anyone else in here should be disrespected. We are colleagues, and I respect each and every one of you for the work that you do for your communities. I respect the fight in each and every one of you. I thank you because you helped form a collaborative caucus. Fifteen members from all different walks of life with different political ideologies came together with one common goal, to fight for the people of this city. To fight on behalf of Chicagoans, working-class Chicagoans, to put Chicagoans first. We had members from the Gay Caucus, the Black Caucus, the Hispanic Caucus, Women's Caucus. We all came together and worked together. It was the first time since I've been down here that I was a part of something that actually felt positive and it actually felt like working with the team. Alderman Hopkins, Beal, Chico, Quinn, Lopez, Curtis, Tabarez, Scott, Cardona, Wedgesback, Viegas, Napolitano, Riley, Silverstein, and myself. I respect each and every one of you and the time and effort that you put into fighting for Chicagoans. This is what I have asked for repeatedly from a year ago. When I came down here and I said, "I guarantee," I actually bet my entire year's salary, and I said, "I guarantee we'll be back down here in November because of the money that we are spending on migrants as opposed to Chicagoans, and we're going to ask for a property tax increase." And to prove to you that I came to you with respect. When you ran against Paul Vallis in the runoff, I didn't have a dog in the race. I had my own runoff to worry about, which I won, and you won. You won, fair and square. And when I first met you, I shook your hand and I said, "Congratulations." And when members in this caucus, in this council, tried to take away your right to name your own chairs, I stood up and I said, "No, that's wrong. Check the tapes, please." I go, "No, that's wrong. Let him name his own chairs. He deserves that, he earns that." I stood up, I stood here and said that. When you wanted to give Chairman Dow, the chairman of finance, I stood up and I said, "Yes, you earned it, Chairman Dow. You work hard down here every year, which you do." Much respect to you and the work that you do. When we brought in the ceasefire resolution down here, which arguably should never have even been brought in here, and you needed that vote. You needed that vote to be a tie in order for you to make the tie-breaking vote. I never came to you and I said, "Hey, man, I need this for my community." I know you need me right now, but I need this. No, I voted on behalf of what I thought was right, on behalf of my community. And I voted for that ceasefire resolution to prove to you that I came here with goodwill, with my hand out to you, to say, "Hey, man, I'm willing to work with you." Any of the appointments that you have, I always say, "If they're from Chicago, man, I'm with it, man." And I always say, "Great job. Great job, Mr. Mayor." But like Alderman Quinn, who I can hear it in his voice, he feels disrespected, his community feels disrespected. When I hear Ms. Jackson, when I hear Zoe come down here and talk, even though we look different, we may talk different, we may act different, we feel the same pain. And that's what we have in common, and that's what you're starting to see around here. Black people, brown people, white people, gay people, men, women, coming together because they don't like the way that you are treating people. I can't even get a meeting with you. I represent 55,000 people in the 45th ward. I can't even get a meeting with you. The reality is, is that I'm not trying to be your enemy. And many people in here feel the very same way. We're trying to work with you, but we don't. We're shut out. We're shut out of everything. Again, that's facts. I have proven through my track record, please check the tapes on everything that I said. I have proven with my hand out to you, I'll work with you. Anytime you come to the 45th ward, you know who the first person is standing there when you get out of your car? Me. Welcome to the ward. Mr. Mayor, I respect the position. Even though our political ideologies might be different, I respect the position. But what I can't respect is you continuing to disrespect me. Because when you disrespect me, you disrespect the 55,000 people that I represent, that I was voted to represent. Now, I don't want to make it personal, but you're making it personal. You continue to hold my head under the water. Once again, it's facts. I am trying to work with you as best as I can, on behalf of my community. And once again, I feel like this is... Everybody in here, a lot of people in here know exactly what I'm talking about. Exactly what I'm talking about. I'm trying to work with you, but you don't want to work with me. You don't want to work with my community. So yes, I'm standing with a lot of the people who were trying to take power away from you, and I stood with you. I stood with you. I said, "No, man, that's wrong. He earned it." He earned... He's the mayor of Chicago. He got voted in. He won fair and square. He's the better man. He won. But you still want to disrespect. I wish you well. We'll be back here, like Alderman Hopkins said, we'll be back here next year talking about even worse budgets. It's going to be even more difficult. I suggest, over the next year, I beg of you to start talking to some of the members. There's only 50 of us in here. We can't even talk to you. There's many of us who are willing to work with you, and I am one of them. But if you continue to shut the door on me and my community, I have no choice. So I'm against this budget.
Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to these items? Any other Alders that wish to speak to this item? Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been one of the most stressful budget that I've been in, in the 25 years I've been in with the council. And one of the reasons that I had so much reluctance right off the bat, I knew I wasn't going to vote for this budget, because I've been asking for help with my community. I done went with everybody, I done just begged and pleaded, not for me, but for the people that live there. If the people are struggling and suffering from the flood, the largest flood in the history of the city of Chicago, right in the 37th ward. My colleagues, everybody, just go on and act like they don't hear. My colleague Alderman Coleman, the Black Caucus stood up, we got $5 million. I'm like, "Well, okay, $5 million." But no, that got to be split between five wards up on the west side. I'm like, "Damn." That's what I said. There's got to be something here. What am I supposed to do to help? And look, as long as I've been on this earth fighting for my community and fighting for what's right, I would never stop. And I would never stop speaking until they get some help that they need. I'm not going to stop. And, Mr. Mayor, finally, we get to this budget. Dog, we got to wait till we get to the budget to get some help. Well, we're here. And yes, I'm a country little girl, and I don't mind being country, because that's where I'm from. And sometimes, my community understands that better than any of those that have been to college and got their degrees. Because I'm going to put it to them plain. I don't cut no corners, and I'm not going to talk with a forked tongue, and I'm not going to play no games, because I don't have time. I stopped playing when I was a child. I'm a grown woman now. And anybody that know, whatever profession you in, we should be able to count 26 votes. Now, I've spent all this time trying to get to 26 votes. The 26 votes should have been back in July. The 26 votes should have been when he first took over as mayor. 26 votes, right off the bat. Because I know I can't move without 26 votes. We down here playing these games. You playing with people's life, that's all I'm telling you. We playing with folks' life. I've always been told, politics is you got people's life in your hand. And we need to be able to move it, to help them. If you ain't going to help them, get out the way. Just get out the way. I'm sick and tired of coming down here myself, and I'm missing my time out of my community to help them. The holiday, they need you. They need you now. My seniors need me. They looking for us to give up some hope, some light. And we still down here playing with the budget. I'm trying to figure out yet how I came from $300 million down to nothing. I'm trying to figure that out right now. You kind of lead me, and I'm not scared to say it, because, guess what everybody else is saying? We don't trust this administration. Well, let me say about that. If you intend to move this city forward, we better get on the right track with this trust thing. Because if everybody start distrusting you, we got a problem. If I can't trust my colleagues, I got a problem. The separation, I got a problem. If you think you're going to have another Alderman tell me, and I was elected in my ward as an Alderman, what to do, you're wrong, wrong. I get up every morning with my mind made up what I'm going to do and how I'm going to go out and help somebody. Now, we can talk together, because they was elected in their ward like I was elected. But that do not make no one have no power over me. If my mother and daddy don't have it, and it bless their heart they rest in, they gave me enough wisdom while I was here to be able to conduct myself, respect people, work with folks. I don't have to like you to work with you. We need to stop playing games down here. All these, some of you ain't never been in government, don't know nothing, can't nobody tell you nothing. Run around here like you got all the answers. You don't have all the answers. People's out here looking at us. Now, my community told me, "Don't vote for a property tax." And I stood fast and I'd vote for them. But the mayor, you done changed that. Taxes off the table. They've been texting me, saying, "Yay, they glad, so that we can help uplift the city." I still, we think we got time. I think things can change. But you got to roll up your sleeve and want to change. Y'all need to change your heart. When you go through the holiday, let the light shine down on you and let you know that Jesus Christ was born. That's what you need to know. A little baby in a manger. And that's what we are, babies in a manger. Get some sense. Stop putting your elbows up like you got something. A lot of us talking about taxes, raising people's property taxes, you know what I said? Man, before I became an Alderman, I remember I was having that same problem. I'd be damned if I'm going out here, vote a high tax... a high taxes when I know I had the problem. They don't have the money. Oh, but you know, Mr. Mayor, you didn't have the money either, right? Because you didn't have the water bill paid either when you became mayor. So we can't be putting no prices on our community like that. But I'm grateful today, and I am voting for it. I'm voting for the budget. Because I wanted us to get it right. Whether they like it or not, I am doing what my community wants me to do.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman.
They elected me, and I'm going to represent them.
Alderwoman, just a second, please. I would respectfully ask that the members in the gallery to stop being disruptive, please. Sergeant at Arms, please help us restore order.
Look.
Just a second, Alderwoman. I want to make sure that you can hear. Sergeant at Arms, thank you for helping to restore order.
Set him up.
I would ask that the members in the public chamber please refrain from speaking out of turn.
He wanted to go anyway.
Just a second. You all continue to shout, I'm gonna have to ask that the Sergeant at Arms remove you all. Alderwoman, please continue.
See, Mr. Mayor, can I keep going? I don't like to be held up. Because they ain't representing nobody out there. There ain't nobody elect them out there to do nothing.
Want to make sure that you can hear.
And I ain't worried about them. I've been elected 25, 25 years, and I ain't, I'm still here. So I gotta be doing something right. I ain't down here raising hell about nothing. My neighbor across the street sent a message to me, made sure that I tell, don't tell Alderman don't raise my taxes. Now, I gotta worry about my community. Folks, your neighbor, Mr. Mayor, I met him in Walmart store. He told me to make, tell that mayor to make sure he don't raise the taxes. I said, I'm trying my best. Your neighbor. I wouldn't get his name because I don't want you to have to go back and mess with your neighbor. But, but I'm sure right now he glad about you not raising them taxes. And we need to put together, Mr. Mayor, we need all of us working together. I see you have a few that you work with here in this council. But as your senior or the person in this city, I'm telling you, you got to bring everybody together. You got to try. And when you don't try, you gonna fail every time, and you gonna keep having this devices going on in this council. So I want to thank you for it, and I'll be voting on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Viegas, Alderman Viegas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to thank the 15 Aldermen that stood up and pushed back around property taxes. And as we wrote these letters and the amount kept coming down, I joked with them that we should continue writing letters because we may have a surplus based on, on the letters that we're writing. But listen, there's a lot of savings within city government that just hasn't been realized. And it's been because it's been lazy. There's only so many levers that we can pull in order to generate revenue. Property taxes, fines, fees, and TIF surpluses. As a chairman of technology, I've spoken with tech firms to figure out how to deliver services. Listen, government, we don't manufacture or sell widgets, we provide a service. How can we do it in an efficient manner, at the same time, realize savings for our constituents? Get businesses up running quicker, which in turn realizes revenue. This was brought to Budget Committee, oh, sorry, Budget Director, the Controller, zero. We could have saved $40 million on time and attendance by using a technology that already exists that the county's using. All we would have to have done is piggyback off a contract. Crickets. We could have took a look at engaging some of our IT companies that have told me that they can save and willing to put it in writing, they could save us anywhere between 50 to 75 million dollars by taking a look at duplicative licenses. Talked to another company that talked about requiring CPD to go to the cloud for their body cameras instead of having servers. Again, cost savings. Kicking the can down the road and not finding structural revenue or efficiencies is a problem. The deficit that we're going to be facing in '26 and '27 are going to be anywhere between 900 to 1.2 billion. Now, while we're in Springfield, we should be also taking a look at, taking a look at the pension obligation and the manufacturer date that they gave us to come to 80 to 90%. Extending it a little bit, but in, but also codifying that we'll make the actual payments. That is what's, that's what's choking this budget, is this pension obligations. And we're going to make sure that the pensioners get paid. We're gonna make sure the pensioners get paid. They, they invested in those pensions, they deserve to get the payout. It's not their fault that previous administrations took pension holidays and did all these other things, but we're here. But while we're down in Springfield also, this is the perfect time to talk about a city charter. Because what we're seeing here is just really a race to '26. Who can get 26 votes? That's, that's the process. We need to get a structure just like LA, New York, Philly, that have a city charter that designates a speaker or president of the council in charge of the agenda, their own budget. The mayor proposes his budget, negotiations take place. When this budget's introduced, and the Budget Committee's been working on it for months, we get two weeks to analyze it? Oh, oh, by the way, you got to answer the phone because people are talking about they need the tree, they need city services. But we don't have the staff for analyzing budget, and COFA doesn't either. Legislatively, has three positions, only two are filled. The Budget Committee has 53 positions, and they work months. I want to make sure that the Budget Committee has the necessary resources in order to arm ourselves. So that way, we can make sure that we're on a level playing field. If you think that you can analyze a budget in two weeks, well, I got a bridge to sell you. While we're down in Springfield, talking about pension, we should be also talking about a city charter. The time is now to have a city charter. So that way, this body, this legislative body has the necessary tools and a playbook on how to make sure that the residents of the city of Chicago, our budgets are passed responsibly. Now, I can't support this budget. I can't support this budget because we're talking about $40 million, missing payments. We started at 300, now we're at zero. And when we talk about getting to zero, now everybody wants to, we did it. They always say victory has a thousand fathers, defeat's an orphan. So what I say is this, we still have a little bit of time. I'd like for us to figure out a way to get some structural changes in here, right-size government, and make sure that the taxpayers and the Chicagoans are heard. I want to, I want to also thank this body for really standing together. Because there's been a lot of changes in this budget, a ton of changes. This is good. Democracy is good. But I think we could do a little bit better. I'm not going to allow perfect to be the enemy. But I can tell you that when you're talking about efficiencies and what's been produced right now, I don't think there's $400 million in efficiency, as stated earlier. I can tell you that there's more, there's more to be done. And so, there's still an opportunity, another two weeks or so to do this. But again, I would ask for you to take into consideration, say no, and let's come back next week and finish this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak? All right, if there are no other Alders that wish to speak, we have our final three speakers in this order. Alder Spazato, Alder Dow, and Alderman Irvin will close. Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Mr. President. Took so long to speak, I was thinking of chicken and elk, so. Uh, but I can't do that, so. So I just, I just want to say a couple of things. I rarely ever write a speech, but today I did write a speech. So I'm gonna be half from the heart and half from a written comment, so. Just want to remind everybody that more than 14, more than 15 people fought against the property tax increase. It was 50 people that stood up against it, so. And you guys heard us, you went back to the drawing board. Uh, you got it down to another point that we couldn't accept. You went from 300 to 68. Um, we, that was kind of rejected, that's why we delayed it till now. So there was more than 15 people that stood up and fought back, so I just want to bring that to everybody's attention. Um, I heard from a lot of my constituents, of course. Um, there actually, believe it or not, everybody, there was a handful of people that says we need taxes to support the city and everything. So I'd probably say maybe like 5% that either said, they stand behind me whatever my decision is, and we need taxes, shockingly. But the majority of people said they can't accept the property tax, so. So with that, we went from 300 million down to zero. So that was one of my requests to get it down. Uh, well, before I get to that, I just want to say, as far as your team, let me backtrack a little bit again. I pretty much only dealt with Annette. And Annette, you were awesome. I don't know if I called you the most, the least, in the middle of the pack, whatever, but you always return my calls, always answered my questions. Um, I even reached out to Susie Park a couple of times for some help and some understanding. So Annette, you were there for me, and I appreciate it. Um, I don't know, we agree on everything, but I know this is not an easy thing to do. So some of the things I asked for, I said I couldn't support the universal basic income, that was gone. Um, I, elimination of the liquor tax, I asked for that, that was gone. Um, I know it would destroy our businesses, especially myself being a border ward. Um, certainly those of us Napolitano and Silverstein and Viegas, Telefero, we're kind of, we're kind of border wars, we'd get destroyed. So that was eliminated, so I appreciate all of that. But there is one thing that my phone blew up on. I just want to go on record as saying this. I know a lot of my colleagues are worried about me, and that's the snowshoveling program. And I said I can't support this. So all this is, and I just want to be on record saying is, this has to go to a vote. If we approved the snowshoveling program, the snowshoveling pilot gets put in there. I already made it perfectly clear. I'm against supporting the pilot. So I just want to go on record as saying, everybody, all you 15, 20 people that tweeted me about this, I don't believe there is a snowshoveling program this year. I believe this is for next year with the approval of the full city council. So I appreciate all of that. I also, Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, I reached out to the Restaurant Association, asked me to Teamsters. Um, they were all, they're not jumping for joy and giddy about it, but they, you know, those, those people who are all friends of mine supported it, so. Um, so, just want to read right after say, everybody, so, um, no matter what I do, and I will say that many of you spoke very eloquent. I'm sure I'll be the least eloquent speaker here. Um, I always say nobody's going to sway and change anybody's mind, but I tell you what, a couple of you had me, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. So you all, you all, all you did pretty good. So I'm proud of everybody. I still consider most of you in here my friends, and I know most of you hopefully still consider me a friend. So with that, and this year was an...
Take your time, sir.
Sorry.
All right, take your time, sir.
This year's budget was a little hard on me because I lost a close family member. So I'm always here, but this year I wasn't here like I was. And, um, I'm sorry, everybody, but it was especially tough one on me, so, okay, thanks. So, hope I could read it, so. Um, I noticed this year's budget was a very, very, very contentious and a difficult issue. Um, this year was a very difficult decision for me, probably my hardest vote in the 14 years since I became an Alderman. Like many of you, I struggled with, over my vote for quite some time, was trying to find another way to move forward with the city's budget and services. As with so many of these things these days, I do not see another way to meet the city's obligation. I totally understand that most of our constituents are frustrated and at the cost of everything, including daily essentials is very high. The city needs to make a budget to move forward and continue to provide continuation of necessary services. The last several years have proved very problematic, and with the COVID pandemic and the influx of migrants, inflation and crime on the raise, arise. Due to these circumstances, our city resources have been strained in ways that we have not encountered before. I pride myself on my record, and I have always tried to stand up, stand up for my constituents and their best interests. Sometimes, though, unwanted and, some are, some decisions are unwanted and necessary. The current situation cannot be addressed without some painful measures. I wish there was a better, better and less painful way to address our current budgetary issues. Without the passage of this budget, I know that the city's bond ratings will go down, various city services may be shut down, and that many city employees may not be paid or lose their jobs. I do not want to see people be laid off or lose their income, health benefits to the detriment of their families. Many of our city employees are friends and neighbors. I am hoping the coming year will bring improvement overall and will put us on a better financial position next year. After much consideration, I would voting, I would voting yes on the 2025 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final two speakers. Thank you, Alderman Spazato. Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Okay, uh, this has been a really tough, uh, process, and Mayor Johnson, uh, my colleagues, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. First thing I would like to say is to thank Chairman Irvin for guiding us through this budget process. I want to thank and give a lot of kudos to, uh, Annette, Jill, and Chase, and their entire finance team for their constant presence during this process. Um, I also want to thank Emily Kennedy and Bianca from IGA. Uh, I have seen you guys work really hard, and I appreciate the effort. Mayor, I want to thank you for your active involvement and compromise and collaboration. And when I think of this 2025 budget process, I have actually seen the power of the city council and what we can do when we work with passion and integrity. And we're gonna throw in a little bit of shenanigans, too. This budget got off to a rocky start, more than any that I can recall in Chicago's recent history that I have participated in. And this budget has been all the manic, an all the manic-led effort. We worked to make countless changes to the budget to best represent our constituents. The budget we're voting on today is a culmination of that process, the good, the bad, and the ugly. It is representative of the many asks that we have made. Let's be realistic, not everyone is going to get what they want in this budget. But this is our budget. And this is the budget that we worked on, and this is the budget that we asked for. And the administration, to their credit, has responded. This is a budget we own, folks, and we now have to make the right decision today and vote for it. Gone is the proposed $300 million tax increase, all of it. Not some of it, not most of it, but all of it, and that's what you all asked for. Back in the budget, our important constitutional policing position, gone are the liquor taxes. Replaced with other programs that generate revenue for us. ARPA funds have been repurposed to fill the budget gap. Government efficiency was prioritized. The mayor cut his own staff to get the balanced budget, this budget balance. New parking enforcement aids are on the way. And while holding the line on layoffs, furloughs, and keeping the advanced pension payment, these items are all critical to our city's operations and future fiscal health. These were our demands, and they were heard. Now, the budget is not perfect, but we have to be honest negotiators here with the administration and amongst ourselves and meet each other at a place of true compromise. And this is where we are at with this budget. I just want to correct, uh, some things. First, the budget is almost 70% structural modifications with 30% one-time fixes. We have not $450 million in cuts, but $460 million in cuts and efficiencies. And over 470 corporate positions were cut in this budget, and the corporate budget is only 5.79 billion. So when people think of the entire budget, our focus was mostly on the corporate budget. This is where we are with this budget. And it's not 2019, Alderman Lopez. It's 2023, no matter how much we wish it was 2019. Just like I can't go out and buy eggs or gas or a house at 2019 prices, I can't pay city staff...
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair, she is directing her comments to me. She is...
I can't pay city staff or our contracts or our obligations at 2019 prices. That comparison is a fallacy. These prices simply don't exist today. Inflation is real, and as a city, we need to get through it together. But that doesn't mean we can't be judicious and efficient in our spending. And that is what we have done. We've done this through cuts to vacancies, improving government efficiencies... We've done this through cuts to vacancies, improving government efficiencies, having event organizers, organizers pay their fair share, repurposing opera funds, and instituting limited fee increases. This budget does the two most important things we do as a government. One, it delivers City of Chicago services, which I believe, after traveling in a lot of different places, we do it best here in the City of Chicago, and that's what our residents want. And it does that through a balanced fiscal year 2025 budget. The other thing that this budget does, it makes clear to our residents that they pay enough to all the taxing bodies, not just to the city, but the state, the federal government, the county, and our sister agencies. We need to make sure that our partners step up, and it can't all be on Chicago back. But until that happens, and I hope it happens soon, this budget makes responsible choices for the proper stewardship of our city. And this was made all the more possible by the continued work of all of my colleagues right here in this chamber, who tirelessly advocated for the best budget we can for on behalf of our residents. So, please, I ask you, like you have done throughout this process, be a part of the discussion and a part of the solution, and join me in supporting this budget and passing it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. For our final speaker, the Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item I do want to clear up before I go into the conversation, as it relates to a point that the Alderman from the 42nd Ward brought up, a relation to the substitute management ordinance as amended. I did ask Sergeant at Arms to pass out a corrected copy of that whereby the section that he spoke of about December 13th, which was actually removed in committee, should have been on the one that we received. These last two pages with the top page makes that correction. So, just so that everybody knows and understands, those items that were talked about as far as mid-year budget reporting and those provisions that were added to the management ordinance are still in the management ordinance and do not have an expiration unless the ordinance does not pass in its entirety. So, I do want to make sure that we are all correct and clear on that. I do want to thank the staff and everyone that has provided us with all of the information and the light to bring us to here today. Our Budget Director, Annette Guzman, thank you for your help and your support. I know you're tired of my calls, probably all of our calls for that matter, in this process. Comptroller, Chase, you two, we need to thank you for all that you all have done to help get us to this particular point on today. And finally, of our finance team, our CFO, Jill Jaworski. Again, I want to thank you all for leading us and helping us with information. I know that we had a ton of through the chairs this year, and that you guys got them out as fast as you can, and so we appreciate all of your work and support. The staff from IGA, Kennedy, Emily, Bianca, Ugo, really thank you all for your collaboration and working with us, bringing things that were needed, answering questions, working with the departments and getting the information that is necessary for us to continue and to get to this point today. Also, the committee staff that worked real late on providing information to members of council and of the committee, Terry Marshall, Ursula Coleman, thank you all for your help and support, as well as the members of COFA, the Director, Janice and Dan. We appreciate you all sticking around and working with this process as well. You know, every morning, my phone opens up to a particular part, portion of scripture. This morning, I thought it was going to say that everybody wants to go to heaven, but no one wants to die. But it did not give, it did not give me that. Today, it said, keep thy tongue from evil and thy lips from speaking ghile. And with that, I'm going to be on my best behavior. My mother called me and said, hey, I know this has been tough. I know this has been challenging, but through it all, we will get through this and get there. Again, what if? So apropos. What if we went back to 2005 and didn't sell the Chicago Scottway? What if we went back to 2008 and did not sell the parking meters? What if we went to 2015? Some of us were here and some of us were not instituted a garbage fee on some of our poorest residents in the city at the same time we hit them with a $600 million tax increase? What if? Some people want to go back to 2020. What if we could do that?
Excuse me, Alderman.
Thank you.
If you continue to jump out of turn, I'm going to ask the Sergeant at Arms to remove you, and I will recess this meeting again. Please continue.
Again, what if? I don't want to go back to 2020. You want to know why? In 2020, we had less jobs for youth. In 2020, we had more homicides, more crime in 2020. We had less mental health services in 2020. We had less people in streets and sanitation cleaning our communities in 2020. In 2020, we didn't have the level of investment on the South and West sides of Chicago in 2020.
Excuse me. This meeting will stand in recess. Please remove these individuals. Take your seats. The meeting will reconvene momentarily. Please have a seat and remain silent. Thank you. Thank you. This meeting will come back to order. This meeting will come back to order. Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin as he delivers his comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as I stated earlier, I do not want to go back to 2020. Again, less affordable housing, less of the things that communities and people who are struggling are in need of. Again, neglect is not cost-free, and neither are cuts. They're not cost-free. So, I would ask us, I know this is always a challenge. Today, I think voting no is easy. Voting no is easy today because you can say whatever it is that you want to say, but the investments that are presented in our communities, the investment in the people that we represent, is what this budget truly is about. Again, they say when the elephants fight, the ground gets trampled. I don't believe that we want to trample our constituency. I don't believe that we want to trample our city. I do believe that all of us have a care and concern about the City of Chicago. While we may have different opinions of how to manage and get there, I do believe that we all have that care and concern. Again, while we are, continued this debate, you all are correct. We will have to begin to roll up our sleeves and work through the challenges that we will face, not in August, but a lot earlier on. And part of the management ordinance will give us the tools and everything to work through that. So, I hope that we all, as we move past today, get together, roll up our sleeves to take care of the business of the people of the City of Chicago. Again, thank you all, this process. We may disagree on stuff, but again, we all know and love and care for one another. Some of us disagree all the time. It's okay. But I know at the end of the day, we're all trying to fight for what we believe to be in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Chicago. With that, Mr. President, I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee on Budget and Government Operations and adopt, the first item is the 2025 Code Corrections Ordinance, which was ordered to be deferred and published on December 11, 2024, as Ordinance This is the Code Corrections Ordinance. If it pleases everyone, we can adopt this by the same roll call previously applied to Item 1 on the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 2, I would propose a set of amendments to the 2025 budget recommendations, which replaces and updates the amendments package previously deferred and published. In the text portion, the amendments I proposed will reduce the mayor's positions by $1 million, reduce middle management positions by $2.8 million, including reductions from the Chicago Police Department, Department of Human Resources, Department of Public Health, Department of Planning and Development, Department of Finance, Department of Procurement Services, Department of Fleet and Facility Management, and the Community Commission on Public Safety and Accountability. Save $1.1 million by shifting eligible BACP costs to the Cable TV Originations Fund, reduce $40 million in debt service payments, and save $5 million in energy facility management efficiencies, and save $8.6 million through contract saving initiatives. I move to adopt these amendments in the text portions and incorporate them into the 2025 Annual Appropriation Ordinance by roll call vote.
Very well. Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor for a roll call vote on Item 2. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. With respect to the motion made in accordance with Rule 30, I ask that the amendments first be read as it stands, then the words proposed to be stricken out, then, and those to be inserted, and finally, excuse me, on the amendment to strike and insert, the paragraphs to be amended must be first read as it stands, then the words proposed to be stricken out, then those to be inserted, and finally, the paragraph as it will stand, if so amended, to have them read accordingly.
So, there's a motion on the floor to read the amendments as, could you restate your motion? There's a motion on the floor to read the amendments?
Sure.
So, all pages?
So, as a matter of point of order, there's a motion made by the Chairman of Budget to amend the budget recommendations. I am asking that in accordance with Rule 30, that the original text be read and that the amended paragraphs be read as amended before finally being voted upon.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor.
I want to lay that motion on the table.
It's not a motion. Excuse me. It's not a motion, Mr. President.
Okay, so you're not making a motion?
It's just the rules. I'm citing the rule...
You're citing the rules?
...to follow for the reading of the original text along with the amended text before we take up the amendments before the body.
Mr. Chair, has the amendments been delivered to this body?
Yes, the amendments have been delivered to members of this body.
Okay, so the amendments have been delivered to this body, and the body has received them. And so, therefore, with the body having received those amendments, those amendments are able to be read by the body as they have been delivered? So, there's a, there's a, there's a recommendation on the floor for those items to be read. Now, those motions, excuse me, Mr. Jeff. So, per Rule 30, the Alderman Lopez is asking that the clerk read all 70 pages of that which has been stricken or added. So there's, there is, just, just hold on a second, please. We could move a motion to suspend the rules in order to waive the request to read all 70 pages. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? All right, so there's a... So, thank you, Alderman Lopez. So there is no motion on the floor. There is a, there's a, there's an application of the rules that you wish to move in order to read items that are added or stricken in this particular amendment. So there's only one motion, which is to suspend the rules. Just relax, okay? So there's a motion to suspend the rules. Just a second, sir, I promise you, I will recognize you as I've done for the last 19 months. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Mr. President, the motion was already made by the Chairman of the Committee on Budget and Government Operations to accept an amendment to the budget recommendations. That is the original motion. The request was simply to have, per our rules, to have those amendments read. The motion has been made, and this is no different than calling the question or anything else, this is per our rules, that in an amendment motion, that all items that are being changed be read. You cannot suspend the rules to avoid a vote on what has already been motioned. That should have been done in advance to stop any kind of motion. And unless the chairman wants to withdraw his motion...
So that's what we are articulating. Thank you. Are you finished? I apologize. Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the Chair, if you're willing to withdraw your initial motion and restate your motion coupled with the motion to suspend and waive Rule 30, we will accept that motion.
So moved.
So there's a motion to, there's a, there's a motion for a roll call vote on item number two, coupled with the motion to suspend the rules in order to waive Rule 30 of having to read 70 pages of items added or stricken. Very well. All those in favor, okay, there's a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please prepare our e-vote application for this motion. And again, for clarity, there's a motion by Chairman Irvin to a roll call vote on item number two with the various budget recommendations for 2025 coupled with... Very well, so just for clarity, this, the motion that is on the floor, for clarity, is for the suspension of the rules in order to avoid or not having to read, per Rule 30, 70 pages worth of items added or stricken in those various amendments. And there's a roll call vote for this particular item. So in order for us to vote on whether or not Rule 30 would need, could be waived, we are voting to suspend the rules first in order to be able to waive the Rule 30 element of requiring 70 pages worth of reading.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open. Please cast your vote. If you're having difficulty, please raise your hand. Okay, we'll now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alderman Curtis?
Yes.
Alderman Curtis? Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Aye.
Alderman, Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Vasquez?
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is a yes. Alderwoman Manay Happenworth?
Aye.
Alderwoman Manay Happenworth is a yes. Alderwoman Haddon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Haddon is a yes. Everybody's in? Okay, voting is now closed.
There are 48 yays and two nays. The motion to suspend the rules in order, have been, have passed. Now for a motion for a waiver on Rule 30 that would require 70 pages worth of amendments. You don't need to do that? There's a, there, in order, just to be absolutely sure, because it is a rule, the rules have been suspended to take up the item to consider whether or not the Rule 30 should be waived. So in the opinion of the Chair, that does require a vote. Now, if, if this body wishes to use the same vote to suspend the rules, I'm happy to oblige. It's been moved in order to waive Rule 30 that would require 70 pages worth of amendments stricken or added into the body. The motion to suspend the rules will be used as a vote to waive the Rule 30. With that, Chairman, would you like to make your original, original motion, calling for a roll call vote for item two?
Yes, I move such. Thank you for saving me, for reading that. I appreciate that today. I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and adopt the 2025, whoa, wrong one.
Item number two. So item number two, which is the amendments to 2025 budget recommendations, which replaces and updates the amendments package previously deferred and published, and the text portion in this item, the amendments that are proposed would reduce the mayor's office position by $1 million, reduce middle management positions by 2.8 million, including reductions from Chicago Police Department, Department of Human Resources, Department of Public Health, Department of Planning and Development, Department of Finance, Department of Procurement Services, Department of Fleet and Facility Management, and the Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability. In addition, in this item, saving 1.1 million dollars by shifting eligible BACP costs to Cable T Organization Fund, also reducing $40 million in debt service payments, also saving $5 million in energy and facility management efficiencies, and finally, also saving 8.6 million through the Contract Savings Initiative. And so you have moved to adopt these amendments into text portion and incorporate them into the 2025 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, and you want us to do that by roll call?
Yeah, that one, that one, yes.
That's one, very well.
Yes.
Very well, so, he did.
So moved.
He didn't, he so moved that motion.
So moved.
Very well, and for a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, could you please make the e-vote application for the members of this body to cast their vote at this time?
Voting is now open, voting is now open. Please mark your, mark your vote on your tablet. If you are having difficulty, please raise your hand. I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Yes.
Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Vasquez?
No.
Alderman Vasquez is a no. Alderwoman Manay Happenworth?
Yes.
Alderwoman Manay Happenworth is a yes. Alderwoman Haddon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Haddon is a yes. Voting is now closed.
There are 27 yays and 23 nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to reconsider?
We can re, we reconsider the vote.
Very well, all those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The amended 2025 Annual Appropriation Ordinance is now before us. I've moved passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Very well. Madam Clerk, could you please make the e-vote application available for Alders to be able to cast their vote at this time? Mr. Chair.
If there is no objection, could we apply the vote on the last item to this item? You roll call?
All right, there is an objection, so we will move forward with a roll call vote on item number three. City Council members, please use your e-vote application at this time to record your vote.
Okay, voting is now open, voting is now open. Please cast your vote. If you're having difficulty, please raise your hand. I will now call on those who have not yet cast their ballot, their vote. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Vasquez?
No.
Alderman Vasquez is a no. Alderwoman Manay Happenworth?
Yes.
Alderwoman Manay Happenworth is a yes. Alderwoman Haddon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Haddon is a yes. Voting is now closed.
There are 27 yays, 23 nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider?
Mr. President, I move we reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to concur in the Committee on the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and adopt the 2025 Substitute Management Ordinance as amended, which was ordered to be deferred and published on December 11, 2024, as SO 2024-0013673 by a roll call vote.
Very well. There's a motion on the floor for a roll call vote for item number four. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of this body, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
Voting is now open, voting is now open. Please cast your ballot on your e-device. If you're having difficulty, please raise your hand. Okay, we'll now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alderwoman Lee? Alderwoman, Alderwoman Lee is a nay. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Conway? Alderman Conway is a yes. Alderman Vasquez?
Yes.
Alderman Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Martin, he just came through, thank you. Alderwoman Manay Happenworth?
Yes.
Alderwoman Manay Happenworth is a yes. Alderwoman Haddon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Haddon is a yes. Voting is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are 34 yays, 16 nays. This item passes. Alderman Mitchell for the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, I move we reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, this motion fails. Yep, I, I heard everybody say no in my heart.
No.
There we go. In the opinion of the Chair, this motion fails. Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and adopt the 2025 Motor Field Tax Funds Allocation Ordinance, which was ordered to be deferred and published on December 11, 2024, as O 2024-0013676 by the same roll call previously applied to the item number one on the Finance Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin for item seven. Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to concur in the in the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operation and adopt the twenty twenty-five motor fuel tax funds allocation intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority and Cook County, which was ordered to be deferred and published on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four as O twenty twenty-four zero zero one three six seven seven by the same roll call vote previously applied to item number one on the Finance Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and adopt the salary resolution, which was ordered to be deferred and published on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four as R twenty twenty-four zero zero one three six seven eight by the same roll call vote previously applied to the item number one on the Committee the Finance Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Thank you very much. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes items of unfinished business related to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Thank you much.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would first like to propose an amendment to the substitute twenty twenty-five municipal code revenue ordinance and property tax levy for year twenty twenty-five, which was ordered to be deferred and published on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four as SO twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one three six seven one that would strike Part Two of the ordinance in its entirety and replace it with what is in front of you today. This amendment consists entirely of replacing the current property tax levy with one with no increase to the base property tax levy and the suspension of the automatic property tax levy escalator. There are no amendments to the revenue portion. I move to adopt this amendment by a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For item number I I eight, Madam Clerk, if you could please make the e-vote application available for this body to cast their vote at this time.
It's okay. Okay, the voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please cast your vote on your e-device. If you're having difficulty, please raise your hand. Okay, I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Vasquez?
No.
Alderman Vasquez is a no. Alderwoman Manay Hoppenworth?
Yes.
Alderwoman Manay Hoppenworth is a yes. Alderwoman Haddon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Haddon is a yes. Voting is now closed.
Very well, there are twenty-seven yays, twenty-three nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to reconsider this vote?
Has a move to reconsider the vote?
There's a motion on the floor to reconsider this vote. All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it. In the opinion of the Chair, Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. The amended substitute twenty twenty-five municipal code revenue ordinance and property tax levy for the year twenty twenty-five is now before us. I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Very well, there's a motion on the floor for the roll call vote for item number nine. The e-application will be made available for this body. Thank you, Madam Clerk. City Council members, please cast your vote at this time.
Okay, the voting is now open. Please cast your vote. If you're having difficulty, please raise your hand. Okay, I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alderman Mitchell? Okay. Alderman Mitchell is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Vasquez?
No.
Alderman Vasquez is a no. Alderwoman Manay Hoppenworth?
Yes.
Alderwoman Manay Hoppenworth is a yes. Alderwoman Haddon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Haddon is a yes. Voting is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are twenty-seven yays, twenty-three nays. This item, this motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider?
Move to reconsider the vote.
There's a motion on the floor, the reconsideration of this vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. Chairwoman Dow.
Yes, Mr. President. That concludes the items of unfinished business from the Committee on Finance.
Very well, thank you, Chairwoman Dow. Today, I'm very proud that we came together as a body to pass this budget. I want to thank every single Alder person in this room who's worked with my administration to get this budget over the finish line. I know this was a long and arduous process and seemed insurmountable. The city of Chicago, however, is better because of your collaboration and your leadership. Make no mistake, for far too long, this city has balanced its budget on the backs of working people with cuts to vital programs, services, and jobs, and the closing of schools, clinics, and public housing. No one budget can fully reverse that legacy. But the budget we pass today is yet another down payment on securing a better, stronger, and a much safer future for the people of this fine city. On behalf of the working class in this city that we call home, I'm grateful for you all's patience. Because of your leadership, this room, and collaboration, we have passed a budget that does not cut services, that does not cut jobs, that does not raise property taxes, and sustains key programs and investments in youth employment, community safety, mental health, and affordable housing. In this budget, we are expanding the total number of youth jobs for next summer from twenty-eight thousand to twenty-nine thousand young people, the largest number of city-funded youth jobs in the history of this city, and a critical investment to ensure that our young people can start off the righteous path. Additionally, in this budget, we also do the blocking and tackling to ensure our city is providing full services for the people of Chicago, like ensuring that streets are clean, garbage is collected, snow is plowed, streets are lit up, business licenses are issued, restaurants meet health and safety standards, cutaway curbs present in potholes are filled and trees are trimmed, because at the end of the day, City Hall works on behalf of the people of Chicago. This budget also ensures our communities are safe, and over the past year, we have seen a decrease in crime and violence in almost every single category. And with this budget, we are going to ensure that we are able to build on that progress in the coming years, investing in real community safety, including sustaining our commitment to addressing gender-based violence. Additionally, we should all be proud at this budget. This budget includes a permanent line item for the crisis assistance response and engagement, the CARE program, which provides emergency response to people who are experiencing a mental health crises. This program shifts the work from our law enforcement personnel to mental health professionals so that those in need can get the best care available. We are upholding our promise and our promises to all of our workers, to the labor force that delivers for our residents day in and day out by fully funding our pension contributions, including the supplemental payment. We are committed to continuing the work of investing in our four pension funds and bringing them all back to fiscal health. This investment is critical to fully recognizing the liabilities the city carries and addressing them head-on to create a future where the city's budget is not constrained by legacy costs. And finally, this budget, this budget, the city is set to release a record TIF surplus of five hundred and seventy million dollars, returning record amounts of tax revenue to our schools, libraries, parks, and to our city colleges. This TIF surplus means putting this money back to work for the people of Chicago and paying for the vital programming that Chicago desperately depends on. And while this budget process may have been different from the past, it has truly been a collaborative process that included unprecedented levels of input, not just from city council members, but from the people of this city. We went back and forth, worked long hours, yes, we did, and rolled up our sleeves to put together a real budget that works for the fine people of this amazing city. More work still needs to be done in the coming year, and in the coming years, we must fight for progressive revenue that ensures that the ultra-rich in this state finally pay their fair share and defend our city and state from those who want to make an example of us by coming together to deliver real solutions that will be the example, not just for this city, but for America. And we stand proud and ready to be the example that only this city can set. The people of Chicago deserve our very best. They are counting on us. Thank you, and God bless the greatest city in the world, the city of Chicago. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I am not aware of any further pieces of unfinished business.
For miscellaneous business, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Except for the ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous.
Very well, Mr. Clerk, for the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Very well, Mr. Clerk, please read the ordinance ordinance.
Read ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago. Section one, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at ten o'clock a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Mitchell?
Who passes in the omnibus?
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance in the unsuccessful motion to re-succ.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned.